Right, um, hey. Um, siya bongakulu eh ngitlukunmige lano ke kame la mnginu sitembe so. Bawamshengu isbongo eh. Uslalawe committee ilasisha mteto le conservation environment. Eh, sesela paga namchla nje. Uguzo lalela i- izimboza baxlari bangapa. Mayelana ne- nepeel ebezo ngiclimachangepeo. Eh, kucho ilikile utmaskala skale sibambala kutasitmaspetaspetase sibaningi. Yata bangu tina basesa sinengi sinto esbapaza msayo abanyabakala bambe singa ne ekolini njalo njalo. Kotwa ke eh besse beas joina ngohamba kweke wenzel. Ngihamba nabaxlonishwage la. Honorable Stephen Modley eh olilunga le committee. Eh, o honorable eh into namchla op eh uherriet Harris amen. Siya bonga o honorable Prampakash olilunga le committee ku namchlonishwa ukliliza. Use. Usaba mbegile ngapandle emo dueninku na kweza uzonge na maduse. Sine ekolisoge zamalu nga ambala eh umlonishwa mfohni sutube. O nga pumelilanga ngengwa o kuti. Beagune special virtual meetings eh legislatures o kate sekion this morning. Batu namayama engagements o. Mloneishwa untombela naye o ngekoyo. Namchlonishwa uspeela who is traveling outside of the country today. Eh, we have honorable the bull eh on the virtual platform. Um, I'm not too sure whether honorable the bull can you show your face there? Honorable the bull. Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I can see you cozy in your lounge. Um, I hope honorable Rashbaz will also join us. Um, we have officials from the legislature eh. Datweretu uvenna Benjamin o ngo legal advisor. O ngo yena futazoba sessionsela e presentation unainchebeke lapha. Elzezute wake umtaka mangele o ngtolega. Eh, uno research awetula umfoetu umngele anginbon. Oku umngele ma. Okay, besse ubake nomtiti elige nje. Nano ma ini hamba kalle lele committee uyena, nano ma ini petayo lele committee uyena. Umfoetu uzuondi lapaya o ngukotinetawa lele committee. Eh, ne- 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 tali sutige lapha elzezwezo kuzo kuzo ptrepech. Eh, naye umanga be ama connections etu eh meta ndanje. Eh, uyaya peti sijenga ma bom. Kotas katisning ma sebenza namige ulchaleza kalle ba nasea bongo. Eh, we are fortunate today ukitisi nama officials from the national department. Eh, of forestry fisheries and environment led by omkondisi eh. O mikateko stholi. Eh, thank you very much for your presence. Eh, sibe nomangeyete lapucha msang eh naye pume mnyangoani siya bonga. Eh, linda mkonto. Eh, kuwe no shabalala. Eh, siya bonga, siya bonga kakwe list na mkonu mto agitila. Shuti nipeto uyena eh nipeto uyena. Manje nangu ngalekona? Oh, si nenjona u babushlo ngwane wasema ngwane ni. Kuna ma officials zagokta la apu ma officials zagokta. Just raise your hands. Okay, thank you. Eh, awa agriculture ngene ngayiboni mote baloa agriculture le mnyango. Ngeyabonga eh apuma city Ws. Committee development workers. Oh, okay, thank you. Eh, what committees? I'm sure they come from various words. Economic committees, okay. Economy department, econa eh based with province. I can see ama firefighters here. Eh, Sanbonani bafue tu shamililo. Eh, yes, that dirty department. Agis? Ik- ik, oh, etia, oh, okay, nibanga. Okay, bapa banyapo. Oh, 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 nishesi, okay, siya bonga. Eh, bakwana bavela gumuinyela mmyango social development health. Eh, nama ama environmental practitioners from localities. Sanwanampwet uvela kwel. Agis? Ah, u wenu pete upkosbagit eh mfoetu ubanisbongo. U shabalala yabona ge shutlomtwebo agitige. Eh, shuti ge ageko moye ozo ozo rapegisitasi shoyonje. Me nana dutu etu mfoetu tutupetu petu umelu upkosbawa shabalala. Eh, shuti intu agitige lebagitina tinengasluisi. Eh, asenzanga natusbe kuweli kulunkulu. Angitini asu ya. Eh, onesera snote bestela umama u- umfoetu u. Ukliliza mto ngomkulu ko siya bonga fuetu tusongenile slalawe committee. Leso pepa eshamteto omkaya wami. Eh, inseso yanga pesa okosileka nama kanzan. Eh, spozu mfohnu mtoaluo eh, saba ngapa. Xianje kutu minanguaza ngaza letegui ngota inkaba yamingapa. Eh, umama nobushenlo opi. Kache bestela usi vulele ngomtanda zo eh usloboska ma weni.
Masimbonge, masimbonge. Gage suksime niwe. Namchla nje. Baba wetu nguele ise onkosetu Jesus. Siya bonga ekseni mitalawe insugu. Sibonga kosami uki uskokile wasbiza uka siso ulchanga nalanga kosami. Siya aktalage baba wetu kutukokonke oguzo kulunya. Ogmaile nanenvelo moyindo ele siktalanga kosi uvulemikondo yetu. Usipe uhlakani pangosi gonke siktalaku wesaktala lumchanga no baba. Uhambe ngendlela echlewe uwe tina asnawa amandla uksenzela. Gepa september wena gonke lokusiktala weliche ikama elka Jesus Christu wasena zaretza manje napaga ate amen.
Siya bongakulu. Eh, umanga be xambe kukona esanga basisanga eh. Xambe ngowezi ntlaga abazi mele yata bangu tingo kamba kaskati. Sizo lokusi thola besesi ya acknowledge aboke abantu abakon. Bagitlomteto zuvinywa eh lepeel. Ipele enga ibea ngoli multipurpose ngi ti itechnical in nature. Oganye inobu. Ino kaga ananjebokunge kungele nto eti ayinabi nto oguazu wibamba ngesandla. Kodwa i- ipeel eti. Ngeninga SSP lakuzona emchla benwonke izipi izinto ekumelisizense. Ngoshelo olusha ukwenza ga istense osoku ti siyamelana nokukuka kwezi mossesu. Weyabona ge. Ule insugu ngendlela echlesa ngayo ilanga eh. Ufuzenga already siyatala nto yoku ti silungselela ufuma echlobele singena. Epsigen kotwa ngendele echlesa ngayo akila negi ngishepsuko. Eh, izinto njalo eziti umanga be kunakushisa kangaala. Iindela ezincha sogwenza izinto sisogwenza njani. Abalimayo ijalo zi- ziyasha eh umanga be linetha linetha ngowekeile. Eh, sinekinga eyiningi nje napo izimo. Esizdazio under normal circumstances isikunga sesona. Now, lo lepelege oganyela nomteto zuvinyo uzoti. Isipi isimo esingasenza ezabantu base South Africa. Ugulandela ezinyatelueneza maso onke omchla ba uki siyemelana analizimo zukukuka. Kwezi mossesulu ugulandela ivin isigompilo lukuti. Ikskatisning kates sipila ngaso. Kunezidebesizenda osukumene manje sizye. Ngoba agusesezona ezufumelanacha benendalo nisimo SSP langa patsiguas. Get out the gears wagal. Giza mugui simplify. Ngoli mlosisuluwa mangetingi- ngi- ngilandela isngisinga outi ku ma swacholila ma- ma presentations. Now, esibal- esixelege la igakuluka zukuzo uvolenu. Eh, ku- 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 kulestribiello somteto. Uki ninage egude ku lamachaptas nama glama- glama clauses. Azobe efundwa la ekazwa ninani bonaga njani. Eh, tina jenga malu ngeshamte tu asisidela uzo paula. Norma uzo beka umbono owe tu uzo nalela. That is why si nama recordings eh. Ninga atmasbonas ngapali ngatiti as- aspalika. Eh, we'll then get recordings then besesi. Senza ama discussions etu on the basis of iimportance of any envyle. Then besesi tige abantu bawazunatal sesi ambile safiga eh winter ten. Saye eh 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 heriquala siso empanya gude. Eh, I think like usamzinyati. I think there are forty six to swahambela. Before si peteke besesi se- siyachlangana on our own. Besesi konsolidator ama views nama imbono ebekwa throughout the province. Besesi siyagu National Council of Provinces uki abantu bawazunatal boona babuana uki. Eh, let's nomteto- nomteto zuvinywa ngokubua kwabo. Naz izinto ekumele xambe zipegue igakulka. Yabona ge ngapa mzinyati ninengi ngeningi njongo ba. Nabanda ba abakamge teguinbe nekingeni ngili kela neta labula labantu. Eh, the people that we know eh oma keluane ana namchla nje. Abaga kacholaga ekaya nje emo langza lakona uno mama ana namchla njongaga zacholaga. Ngena yali mfula eh anetwa kwa ktebeka abantu. Eh, ngapa go go mnambi ti kune simaswela sinetenge itolopa libenga patsugamans. Eh, izimo lezi ezinachwai legile. Ushuku ti ivin in terms of planning omaspala eh. Iindela eh jayo kwenza izinto ze guazu kumela nalana nisimo sesulu izipi. Umanga be kutiwala xambe kuzo vili kusukelegi nje kushe ngilo eh. Ama budget omaspala. How are they going to inform icapacity omaspala uki barisponde. Eh, ku maripit fires a- asebakona manje. Njongo ba kuzo tala nje isimoses sobsiga. Kuno tava ra ekonjo aba hambe pepe mukwai sugunemin avela laklu kwai eh haba. Ushubangu hangu kushe izilo zabantu njalo njalo. Are the municipalities in a state of readiness to respond to such spontaneous fires and all of those things. So that is why si zeleage uki. Ikopi ekumelisigwenze ogu- ogu- oksukile. Ogumelana nisimo zukukuka kwezi mossesulu including. Iindawala kuwa kewa konna abantu ba- ba- baka endaweni ma flat lines. Eh, abantu baka ngapansi kwama- kwama- kwama electrical lines. And all those things uchote malituma izulu icurrents yechlelekboona basha. Nga outing kiaswaga. Sesela indawonya bazalwan eh pela ngitis wes- wesu abantu bengonzo. Eh, manje mosu kuluma kulube ngatiti usuwetu agantika. Nawala mumoyuso yakpaga mis. Eh, xambe ngapande uki kriti iskati esite. Uta dutu uvenna will then do the presentation. And thereafter utolika wayetu angano abazoenza interchangeably nama. Venna you will complete your presentation thereafter eh zamane will interpret. You- you guys decide. But thereafter we'll then have eh or eh xambe ama officials at department emphasizing on- on these points. Eh, because I was told that you are- you are doing the- the um presentation. I- is that in order? Okay, let's do that again.
Thank you, honorable chairperson. If you don't mind, can I stand here so I could use the? Yeah, all right. Uh, let me first greet the honorable members of the um portfolio committee. And uh, all protocols observed. Special welcome to our MVPs. Those are our most valuable members of the public and our stakeholders who are here today. Sanbonani. Okay, good morning. Um, my role here today is to briefly take you through this bill. Called the climate change bill. And thereafter, we want to hear from you as members of the public as to what are your views in terms of this bill? Is it a bill that you support? Or a bill that you do not support? Or if you would like to see some changes made to the bu- the bill? Kindly indicate to us. Perhaps you're not happy with a certain clause or section in the bill. Indicate to us so that we can record all of this information. And as the honorable chair said, all of that information and the inputs you give us will be contained in a report. That will go to the National Council of Provinces or as we refer to them in short, NCOP. Just by way of introduction. Of the climate change bill. It started off in the National Assembly. And it was dealt with by the National Portfolio Committee on Forestry, Fisheries and the Environment. And they conducted physical and virtual public hearings on the climate change bill. From September twenty twenty two to Ju- till July twenty twenty three. And they received, the committee received a number of submissions on this climate change bill. And they deliberated on these inputs from the public. And they agreed to certain amendments to the bill. And these amendments have been factored into the version of the bill that is before you. If you don't have a copy of the bill, it is available at the back. Together with a copy of the presentation, so you can follow along. So this amended bill that is before you was adopted. And referred to the Select Committee on Land Reform. Environment, Mineral Resources and Energy for Consideration. And tha- that is how it has come to us. Because this amended version was referred by the NCOP. To the KZN Legislature as well as all other provinces. For the provinces to conduct public hearings. And formulate what is called mandates. Simply speaking, whether the province is in support of the bill or not in support of the bill. Now, we find that the reason we are here. Has its roots in the constitution itself. Because section one one eight one of the constitution requires that a provincial legislature. Facilitate public involvement in the legislative and other. Processes of the legislature hence the need for this public hearing with you today as stakeholders. Now, in terms of the background of the climate change bill, I will just call it the bill going forward. It's the first piece of legislation in South Africa. Which is dedicated specifically to address climate change mitigation. When we use the term mitigation, it's how do we reduce uh climate change as well as adaptation. This bill will therefore serve as a legal instrument. To build resilience against the impacts of climate change. And to reduce emissions and we will talk about this further later on. In a manner which is aligned to national development commitments and priorities. Now, this bill has its context as part of a bigger global. Move uh by the international community to reduce. Greenhouse gas emissions so. It was developed within the context of South Africa's commitment. To pursuing measures to limit temperature increases to one point five degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels. And this is in terms of the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change. As well as the Paris Agreement that was South Africa ratified in twenty sixteen. So, South Africa is part of a global effort to reduce greenhouse- greenhouse gas emissions. Under South Africa's existing climate change regulatory framework. Industries, for example coal mining. Must submit annual progress reports on its approved pollution prevention plans. To the Minister of DFFE, right? Department of- of uh forestry fisheries and environment. If greenhouse gases are emitted, so there must be those progress reports. And these greenhouse gases, you will hear me referring to them quite often. These have been declared as priority air pollutants in terms of the National Environmental Management. Air Quality Act, so we'll refer to it as its shortened form NIMA Air Quality Act. Now, if you want to know what is the background to this bill, you look at. The first part of the bill which is called the preamble. And when you look at the preamble of the bill, it highlights a number of fundamental underlying principles. And I'm just going to refer to a- a few of them. It refers to and highlights the environmental right enshrined in section twenty four. Of the constitution, that is your- the right to. An environment. Every one of us sitting here today. Every human being has a right to an environment that is not harmful to their health and well-being. In the fundamental underlying principles is also an acknowledgement. That anthropogenic climate change, that word anthropogenic merely means. The kind of climate change caused by human action. It's not natural climate change. But climate change caused by human action, industry etcetera. So it's an acknowledgement that this anthropogenic climate change. Is an urgent threat to human health and well-being. And that an effective, progressive and incremental response is required in South Africa. It also acknowledges that South Africa has a role to play in the global efforts. To reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And that the country has made international commitments in this regard. It's also based on the principle that the impacts of climate change will become more tangible. Through climate variability and extreme weather events. And it's true, we in- in KZN are recipients of these extreme weather events. I'm sure we can all testify to that. And these extreme weather events impact human health, access to food and water. It impacts biodiversity. Um ecosystems, coastal infrastructure. As well as human settlements. Another fundamental underlying principle of this bill. Is that the impacts of climate change will negatively affect the country's development goals. And it's true that if- if. Our- our environment is being destroyed, crops are being destroyed through these adverse uh weather conditions caused by climate change. It will affect food production, it will affect every single one of us sitting here. Another principle is that implementing an effective climate change response. Is a national sustainable development priority. As set out in the National Climate Change Response White Paper. While the country's nationally determined contribution, in other words, it's in shortened form NDC. Determine under this international obligation set out in the Paris Agreement. It anticipates the realization of significant socio-economic and environment- environmental benefits. While supporting the just transition to a climate resistant, equitable. And internationally competitive low carbon economy and society. You will hear these words used over and over again, low carbon. In- in relation to um climate change. Let me go on to the purpose and objects of this bill. The purpose of the bill is to craft and implement an effective national climate change response. Including mitigation and adaptation actions so. It's a national climate change response which South Africa is adopting. And you want to see mitigation, any measures to reduce the effects of climate change and adaptation actions so. Actions that will cascade through in terms of policies at departmental municipality level. And it represents the republic's fair contribution to the global climate change response. So the main object of the bill. Is to enable the development of an effective climate change response. And the long-term just transition to a climate resistant, resilient. And lower carbon economy and society. So we want to see South Africa, it's going to be a long process and a gradual process. Where it's going to be a just transition, where no one is going to be left uh behind. If you are working for an industry that emits these greenhouse gases. You will not suffer job uh loss or- or job uh security will be at issue. Because it's going to be a just transition where no one is going to be left behind. And I'll, we want to have a climate resistant and lower carbon economy. Now, you'll find that the first part of the bill, section one. Deals with certain definitions that are used in the bill. And some of the terms are very technical. So we hope you can catch it uh the- the meanings but just go back and have a look. I may be going a bit fast but just go back and read through these definitions. I'll just touch on certain key definitions today. And the first definition is that of climate change and the bill is called a climate change bill. So what does climate change mean in terms of this bill? It means a change of climate that is attributed directly or indirectly to human activity. So it's not natural climate change but it's attributed to human activity. That alters the composition of the global atmosphere, so all around us. Our atmosphere, right? So, okay, so let me go back. That alters the composition of the global atmosphere and that as. And that is in addition to natural climate variability observed over comparable time periods. What are greenhouse gas emissions? In terms of the definition in this bill. It means greenhouse gas emissions from sources that are owned or controlled by a person. And indirect greenhouse gas emissions means emissions that are a consequence. Of the activities of a person but occurs at sources owned or controlled by another person. A just transition, we find this- this phrase used in the bill. A just transition is defined as a shift towards a low carbon. A just transition is defined as a shift towards a low carbon, climate resilient economy and society and ecologically sustainable e- economies and societies which contribute towards the creation of decent work for all, social inclusion and the eradication of poverty. Mitigation is defined as a human intervention to reduce the sources or enhance the carbon sinks of greenhouse gases, carbon sinks are those um those things that remove uh removed greenhouse gases from the atmosphere, so we want carbon sinks. And the nationally determined contribution means the nationally determined contribution prepared in terms of the Paris Agreement and it's submitted by South Africa to the United Nations in terms of the Paris Agreement. So clause three of the bill, let's move on there. And it sets out the principles guiding the interpretation and application of the act. And some of these principles include the National Environmental Management Principles set out in N I M A or the National Environmental Management Act. And it's also has the other the another principle that the climate system should be protected for the benefit of present and future generations of humankind. I'm going to move on to clause four of the bill. It deals with the application of the act, who does the act apply to, as well as the reporting and tabling of Presidential Climate Commission report, so there's this institution that is existing at the moment called the Presidential Climate Commission. So clause four also deals with the reporting and tabling of the reports of this P C C. Uh clause five of the bill deals with the application of the National Environmental Management Act or N I M A as we call it. So this act must in relation to 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 climate change be read, interpreted and applied in conjunction with N I M A. And it must be regarded as a specific N I M A act as defined in section one of N I M A, so this act, the climate change bill, is not going to be read in isolation, but it's going to be read in conjunction with other environmental, national environmental management acts in place in our country. Clause six of the bill deals with conflicts with these other legislation. And in relation, and when there is a conflict between me with the the climate change bill and any other legislation, this climate change bill will prevail in as far as it relates to climate change matters. Clause seven of the bill places a legal obligation on every organ of state to coordinate and harmonize their various policies, plans, legislation, programs, et cetera, relating to climate change in order to ensure that the risks of climate change impacts and the associated vulnerabilities are taken into consideration. Now clause eight of the bill requires the existing premier intergovernmental forums established in terms of the Intergovernmental Relations Framework Act. These existing forums will also serve as provincial forums on climate change. So a a provincial forum on climate change is charged with coordinating climate change actions in the relevant province. And what happens is this uh um provincial forum reports up to the President's Coordinating Council. And clause nine of the bill provides for all district intergovernmental forums established in in terms of the I G F A to also serve as municipal forums on climate change. So we're using existing forums in terms of this bill um uh to 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 become forums on climate change. And the municipal forum is charged with co- coordinating climate change actions in the relevant municipalities. And the reporting here is up one level to the provincial forum on climate change. Clause ten of the bill provides for the Presidential Climate Commission. And this pre- Presidential Climate Commission is made up of government, organized labor, civil society, traditional leaders, uh selga and business. And the the role of this uh Presidential Climate Commission is to advise on the republic republic's climate change response, so this commission is there currently. So what the act does, what the bill envisages is for this uh Presidential Climate Commission, which already is there, is for it to continue to exist. And the existing commissioners that are already there will serve on the Presidential Climate Commission for the remainder of their term. Clause eleven of the bill provides for the functions of the Presidential Climate Commission, which includes providing advice on the cl- the public's climate change response. And the Presidential Climate Commission may establish committees to assist in the performance of their functions. Clause twelve of the bill was amended by the Portfolio Committee, the National Portfolio Committee, to provide for the process for the appointment of members of the Presidential Climate Commission through a call for nominations and provides for the role and remuneration of commissioners. Clause twelve A of the bill was inserted by the um Portfolio Committee to provide for the appointment of the Executive Director of the Presidential Climate Commission, who will serve as the Accounting Officer of the P C C. Clause twelve B of the bill was inserted by the Portfolio Committee as well to provide for the financial administration of the P C C. Clause thirteen of the bill provides for the Presidential Climate
Just a second, eh eh put the oh pet phone.
Moving on to clause thirteen of the bill, it provides for the Presidential Climate Commission to submit its reports, studies, strategies, recommendations and related information to the National Assembly and to the relevant ministers within thirty days. And the reports of the P C C are also to be made publicly available. Clause fourteen of the bill provides for the appointment of the Secretariat of the P C C by the Executive Director in consultation with the National Treasury. And clause fourteen also sets out the responsibilities of the Secretariat. Moving on to clause fifteen of the bill, it requires an M E C responsible for the environment or a mayor of a district or metro municipality to undertake something called a climate change needs and response assessment. Within one year of the publication of this strategy and plan called the National Ad- Adaptation Strategy and Plan. It further requires a climate change response implementation plan to be developed within two years of undertaking the climate change needs and response assessment. And the clause clause fifteen further sets out the contents of a climate change change needs and response assessment and a climate change response implementation plan, so what needs to go into those documents is set out in clause fifteen. And it also further requires the inter- implementation plan to be integrated into the relevant environmental implementation plan of the province or the relevant I D P of the district or metro municipality. Clause fifteen A of the bill was inserted by the Portfolio Committee to provide for a financial mechanism to be prescribed by the minister to support and finance the republic's climate change response planning and implementation by all spheres of government. Clause sixteen of the bill provides for the establishment of the national adaptation objectives of the republic. And the objectives are to guide the adaptation response, which is to be accompanied by indicators for measuring progress, so we want to see change and how do you do that by indicators to measure progress. The minister is also required to determine the date by which the objectives must be incorporated into national planning, instruments, policies and programs. Moving on to clause seventeen of the bill, it requires the minister to develop something called adaptation scenarios. And these adaptation scenarios anticipate the likely impacts of climate change in the republic and it does this over the short, medium and long term. And the these scenarios must be developed within one year of this climate change bill um becoming an act and coming into operation. And it also prescribes relevant considerations and the min- minimum content of the adaptation scenarios. Clause eighteen of the bill provides that the minister, in consultation with the ministers responsible for the functions listed in schedule two of the bill, um and is required, the minister is required to establish a national adaptation strategy and plan in terms of clause eighteen. The purpose of the National Adaptation Strategy and Plan and the contents are set out in clause eighteen. Clause nineteen of the bill provides that at least within one year of the publication of the National Adaptation Strategy and Plan, a minister responsible for a function listed in schedule two, so whatever departments they are, they're listed in schedule two, they must indicate and undertake an assessment of its vulnerabilities as a as a department. Its vulnerabilities to climate change and determine measures to respond there to. And the relevant minister must then develop and implement a sector adaptation strategy and plan, which is based on the vulnerability assessment. The relevant minister is also responsible for the submission of progress reports on the implementation of the sector adaptation strategy and plan to the minister. This clause further provides for the periodic review and amendment if required of the sector adaptation strategy and plan. Clause twenty of the bill empowers the minister to request and obtain data and other information held by any person which is required for the purposes of the fulfillment of the objectives of this climate change act. The minister is also responsible in terms of clause twenty for the compilation and publication of a report called the Syntha- Synthesis Adaptation Report. Clause twenty one of the bill empowers the minister in consultation with cabinet to determine by notice in the Gazette a national greenhouse gas emissions trajectory for the republic. Until such time as the minister publishes the national greenhouse gas emissions trajectory, the latest updated nationally determined contribution serves as the tra- tra- trajectory. And the clause uh twenty and twenty one provide for the mandatory review of the trajectory every five years as well as the for a review at any other time should circumstances require. Clause twenty two of the bill is important, it empowers the minister to list the greenhouse gas emitting sectors and subsectors which are subject to se- sexual emission targets, something they call S E Ts. And such lists must reflect the national greenhouse gas emissions profile. After this list is published, the minister must determine sexual emission targets for the listed sectors and subsects, so these sexual emission targets, S E Ts, for example, if it's energy is the sector, there will be a sexual emissions target established which will apply to, for example, energy. And the sexual emissions targets must be aligned with the national greenhouse emissions trajectory. And this uh sexual emissions targets is reviewable every five years from the first publication. The clause twenty two further requires the relevant ministers to annually report to the presidency on the progress in achieving the relevant sexual emission targets. And the minister must synthesize all of these reports and submit an annual report on the sexual emission targets to cabinet. Clause twenty three of the bill provides that the minister must publish a list of greenhouse gases which the minister reasonably believes cause or are likely to cause or exacerbate climate change. So there's a requirement to publish a list of all of those greenhouse gases that are related to uh climate change. And the minister must further publish a list of activities which emit or has the potential to emit one or more of the listed greenhouse gases. Clause twenty four of the bill requires the minister to allocate a carbon budget to every person undertaking a listed activity, this is quite an important um innovation here. The the allocation of the carbon budget to every person undertaking a listed activity. And this clause twenty four specifies the minimum requirements to be taken into account when allocating a carbon budget to a person and it prescribes the content. So a person who has been allocated a carbon budget is required to prepare and submit to the minister a greenhouse gas mitigation plan, so these greenhouse gas emitters, if I can call them. They are requ- they are allocated a certain carbon budget, they got to keep within the um their carbon budget and they must submit a plan to the minister as to how are they going to mitigate these greenhouse gases which they emit. A greenhouse gas mitigation plan must comply with all the requirements set out in clauses twenty four, twenty three and twenty four as maybe and as may be prescribed by the minister. Clause twenty five of the bill requires the minister minister to identify synthetic greenhouse gases which must either be phased out or phased down. And this clause empowers the minister in consultation with the relevant ministers and any affected person to develop a plan for the phase down or phase out of the synthetic greenhouse gas. The clause twenty five also empowers the minister to allocate carbon budgets to persons who undertake activities which give rise to the emission of these synthetic greenhouse gases. Clause twenty six of the bill provides for the development of the national greenhouse gas inventory and the compilation of the national greenhouse inventory report on an annual basis. Clause twenty seven of the bill empowers the minister to develop regulations regarding the implementation of the envisaged act. These regulations made must be tabled in parliament thirty days prior to its publication in the Gazette, so the regulations will also come under parliamentary oversight. Clause twenty eight of the bill is concerned with the consultation process that the minister, the M E C or mayor must follow when exercising a power in terms of the carbon uh in terms of the climate change act. This consultation must be appropriate for the circumstances and in case of the minister, when the minister is involved, it includes consultation with all ministers whose area of responsibility will be affected by the exercise of the power and as well as the relevant M E C in each province that will be affected by the exercise of the power. In the case of an M E C, it includes in consultation with members of the Executive Council whose area of responsibility will be affected as well. Clause twenty nine of the bill, and I'm I don't have far to go, I'll, I'm almost reaching the end, thank you for your patience. Clause twenty nine of the bill sets out the public participation process that the minister and M E C or mayor must follow when exercising the powers listed in clause clauses twenty nine uh of the bill. Clause thirty of the bill empowers the minister and an M E C to delegate powers in terms of the act. Clause thirty one of the bill is concern is concerned with the right of access to information. Clause thirty two of the bill is quite important. It provides for offenses and penalties under the Climate Change Act. So if you do not comply with certain provisions of the act, it attracts penalties. And the Portfolio Committee amended um this clause to provide for enhanced offenses and penalties. And if you look at um clause thirty two of the bill, the maximum fine payable there is five million ren if it's a first offense. And if it's two or more offenses, it doubles the fine, so the fine payable will be not exceeding ten million ren. Clause thirty-three of the bill is an appeal provision. So you may appeal to the minister or MEC against any decision taken. Clause thirty-four of the bill deals with the savings and transitional provisions. So there are current laws in place, and when this act comes into operation, you need transitional measures, moving from one position to the next. And clause thirty-five is the last clause of the bill, and it provides the short title or the name of the bill and the commencement of the envisaged act. There are also three schedules to the Climate Change Bill, and these are important schedules. I've mentioned and cross-referenced to Schedule One, Schedule Two, so it's important as well. Schedule One provides for functions relevant to the to the development of sectoral emissions targets. And Schedule Two sets out the national departments and state-owned entities responsible for certain functions, required to develop a sector adaptation strategy and plan. And Schedule Three of the bill provides for the amendment of laws, and it amends NIMA. And this is where I would like to issue a call and an invitation for members of the public sitting here today to submit written comments on the Climate Change Bill. And you can do it in one of three ways. You can do it by way of post or by way of email, which is the quickest, or you can hand-deliver it. And the closing date for comments, please note this, is the twenty-second of March. Not because it's a date we've chosen, but because we are under strict timeframes to provide a mandate to the NCOP, so we are guided by the timelines of the NCOP. You can address your comments to Mr. L Zondi, and he's the gentleman sitting here in the front. If you didn't catch anything, you can speak to him after the public hearing. And if you want to post it, you address it to Mr. L Zondi at the KZN Legislature Private Bag X 911, Peter Marisberg, 3200. Or you can email it to zondilm, Z-O-N-D-I-L-M, at kznleg.gov.za. Or if you want to drive down through to Marisberg, you can deliver it by hand to the KZN Legislature Albertina Sissulu Building. It's our admin building at 244 Langali Palele Street, Peter Marisberg. Also for the attention of the committee coordinator, Mr. Lungisani Zondi. And if you have any inquiries, you can contact him at zero seven three zero zero one four zero two two. This brings me to the end of my presentation. Thank you for being patient, Sia Bongga.
Umthetosvivinyo, o kukuwa kusimosezulu, o ngokala, eningizimafrika. O ngokala, opekele, opegana, nokumelana, ganyeke, nokukuka kusimosezulu. Ngakoke uzo sebenza, uzo sebenza jenge thuluzlo, umthetoslo waka. Injela yokumelana, nmtelela, yokukuka kusimosezulu. No weshlisa, amake, atala, isfutumezi. Mkatini, uze, uhanjiso, anenebo, pose, ntutsugo, oke, zigazwe lonke. Omelando, oke, oma, gesukubala, umthetosvivinyo, awapala, oke, ngapazi, wengi, tsi. Yee, yee bopezelo, oke. Gweningizimafrika, ektsoleni, injela, zo nganda. Ugwenyuwa, oma, ze, ngokshisa. Oba, oke, bugalele, uge, tsi. Se, lokukfiki, mboni, ngati, uke, xisa, oke, wenyuwa, kakulu. Yeko, lokukta, uge, tsi. Amake, slawa, atala, isfutumezi, mkatini. Besa, gwenze, oke. Isimosezulu, besa, xincha, oke, ngo, ngapezo, wa, loke, siktoa, el. So, eningizimafrika, ngaleo, injela, yabaini, nyama, zo, oke, afu, nukulu, isa, na, oke. No, na, no, 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 kukuka kusimosezulu. Amake, si, oke, lawa, atala, isfutumezi. Amaneze, owa, njengoso, ola, amake, es. Omo, e, asekulu, in, ngoglande, la, umthetos, oke, oke, zingabunjalo, lomo, ya. Uwenganyela, oke, mvelo, azwe lonke. Oma, gesukubala, isenjalela. Isenjalela, umthetosvivinyo, eskambisa, mkomu, mningi, mngala. Okbalo, oke, yo, le. Ilungele, le, mvelo, elbegiwe, eska, bensama, shumamabilnane. Umthetosseke, la, lesi, lesi, eska, balasi, oke. Sekuluma, uge, tsi, oonkumuntu, ne, lungelo. Lo, uge, alshane, endaweni, ene, mvelo, eglungelo, kshane. Ungabe, uge, tusheni, eskambamanza, eska, vala, ngshupalalu, en. O, kuindo, oke, sesi, itzola, sesi, sesi, gionamansha. Pinda, oke, guba, ukuvuma, uge, tsi, kukuka kusimosezulu. Okbangwa, ngaband, kuingoze, mpilo, nza, band, nentlala, gashayabo. No, uge, tsi, tineka, injela, ey, mpumelelo, nen, ngobe, gela, pambili. Yokpegana, na, loku. No, uge, tsi, eningizimafrika, ine, kaza, okumele, iljale, mza, mweni. Yamazo, yamazo, mshaba, ngapiisa, oke, amake, atala, isfutumezi, no, uge, lelizwe, lenze, isbopezelo. Yamazo, no, mshaba, ngaloku. Uge, tsi, imttelela, kukuka kusimosezulu. Iyo, iyo, kalukonakala, kakulu. Okukuka kusimosezulu, ne, isimosezulu, ezimbe, kakulu. Njengoba, sikbona, oke, lo, kukui, mansha. Ezio, oba, umttelela, mpilo, nza, band. Eglen, eglen, ganyan, zimvelo. Entrobontrob. Loku, oke, si, akbona, gwenze, oke, eskatini, espila, kuuso. Masukubega. Uge, tsi, imttelela, kukuka kusimosezulu. Guyo, oba, umttelela, omubi, ez, guyo, oba, umttelela, omubi, en, njongo, nze, ntutsugo, ez. No, uge, tsi, ukalisa, injela, zo, pegana, nokukuka kusimosezulu. Yinto, ebegue, ekulu, in, ntutsugu, in, esime, meyo, azwe lonke. Shu, tsi, oke, loku, kuindo, oke. Ebegue, pambila, kakulu, oba, giabonakala, uge, tsi. I, bapilisa, ganyan, zima, band. Asukubala, introso, ne, zinjongo. Introso, umthetosvivinyo, oke, uka. Uka, nokalisa, injela, ey, mpumelelo, okpegana, no, okpegana, nokukuka kusimosezulu. Uzo, lonke. Kubandaranya, inyata, lo, ngapiisa, ganyan, no, no, glungana, no, glungana, isa. Lulu kukuka. Okumele, ika, le, le, eningizimafrika, yamazo, e, yamazo, entlangano, ni, yamazo. Omshaba, okpegana, oke, ne, nokukuka, oke, kusimosezulu. Oma, gesukubala, injongo, ngani, yomthetosvivinyo. Uklegelela, oke, bawakiwe, injela, ey, mpumelelo. Yokpegana, nokukuka kusimosezulu. Ganyan, ne, zule, eskati, site. Lokfinyelela, esmen, lapo, izwe, nomnoto, alo, beguazo. Okumelana, oke, ne, ne, isimoso, kukuka kusimosezulu. La, la, loku, oke, ku, ku, kusnigeza, itembangoba. Kuinjela, eno, blungiswa, oke, yokxincha, kuzi, ntogoto, oke. Kuinjalo, si, ateni, shofutu, uge, a, it, msebenzo, iro, lache, oke. O, gwenze, oke, wale, zingukuka. Oma, gesukubala, mazu, bela, ez, ikaba, eska, basokala, oke. Eska, basokala, slinzeki, ngaze, oke. Zamaka, masetchenziswayo, namatim. Ukukuka kusimosezulu. Ukukuka kusimosezulu, ukucho, oke. Ukukuka kusimosezulu, okbangelewa, ngo, no, ma, okbangelewa. Ngo, izenzoo, izenzoo, za, band. Omomo, umpagati, mshaba, nchigelele. No, wengeza, no, wengeza, kukuke, kusimosezulu, ngo, wenda, alo. Oktalo, kukuka kusikati. Omusuwekes, etala, isfutumezi, o, imbangela, ngo. Loku, ukucho, loku, ukucho, omusuwekes, osugela, ngo, mthonyeni. Ebningasbayo, no, ma, ela, uluan, kumuntu. Omusuwekes, etala, isfutumezi, onge, o, nimbangela, ngo. Loku, shama, kes, ay, mpumele, msebenzi, omuntu, gotwa. Enzeka, mthonyeni, ebningasbayo, no, ma, oke, ala, uluan, kumuntu. Ngzotala, oba, omuntu, aputuma, ngzotala, uge, tsi, nje. Amatim, sbu, si, omuntatholi, eskati, aguazo, uge, a, ipegale, o, na. Galche, ngezwi, lake, ay, ngezwi. Lomvano, ngamangela. Oma, gesukubala, eska, basestatu, use, iwo, mazu, bela. So, nage, speka, mkomu, emailana, no, 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 hunyu, shwa, ganyeke. Noksetchenziswa, kwalo, umtheto. Pagas, we, minye, efaga, le, elandelale. Na, foot, ngzotala, oke, stipeke. Eskati, seto. Eska, basetina, so, nage, spegele, oksetchenziswa, kwalo, umtheto. Ukbiga, ganyan, nokuetula, oke. Nokuetuluwa, kwenbigo, ye, komishana, kamenkameli, isimosezulu. Eska, basestatu, naspegele, oksetchenziswa, umtheto, umtheto, azwe lonke, oke. Uo, nganyela, oke, mvelo. Umtheto, umtheto, okumele, umtheto, okumele, mailana. Nokukuka kusimosezulu, ufu, ndwe, uhu, nyushwe, footi, oksetchenziswe, oke. Ngoklanganela, umtheto, azwe lonke, uo, nganyela, oke, mvelo. Loku, ukucho, uge, tsi, umtheto, oma, auzu, oksebenza, auzu, oksebenza, oto, gotwa, oke. Ikone, minyamtheto, e, e, ezo, ezo, fundwa, ipindi, setchenziswa, no, ma. Ihu, nyushwe, footi, ganyan, na, umtheto. Eska, basestu, oke, so, nage, spegele, ukshaisana, ne, minyamtheto. Gande, oke, oma, kukona, ukumbuzana, pagas, kwalo, umtheto, no, mu. Ika, kulgazi, oma, kulunya, ngo. Okukuka kusimosezulu. Guyo, oke, iwo, oke, umtheto, oyoo, bangapezulu. Eska, basaskombi, sa, so, naspegele, oke. Uglungelanisa, ezingubomkomu. Eska, basaskombi, sa, oke. Si, beka, esbopos, umtheto. Unano, ma, isi, pisku, oskahulumen, oke, basititiye, ele, footi. Se, amani, se, zonke, ezingubomkomu, zaso. Eza, xugene, eza, xugene, amasu, imtheto, izdintlelo. Ezingumo. Ne, zintlelo, zo, zo, tatuwa, kuzi, ngumo, mailana. Nokukuka kusimosezulu. Shu, nje, kafushane, lesi, eska, basukubala, sti, sti, yalela. Injala, kahulumen, uge, tsi, a, kinseki, oke, uge, tsi. Imtheto, yazo, ia, hambi, sana, na, umtheto. Loku, oke, siktole, oke, eska, bense, si, kombi, isa. Oma, si, eska, bense, shakalombili. So, naspinga, oke, ize, kungu, zezintlaga, ez, xuga, ez, xugene, kahulumen. Ez, holo, ngundu, nankul, ngoglande, la, ngoglande, la. Umtheto, oksala, lobjelua, no, bez, bez, zintlaga, zkahulumen. Ga, two thousand and five. Nazo, zesebenza, njenge, ziku, zesfunda, oke. Zokukuka kusimosezulu. Shu, tsi, la, kukulunya, oksebenza, na, kahulumen, uge, tsi. Imnya, ngo, yonke, oke, a, issebenza, ne. Uke, pegana, na, le, simo. No, ma, footi, nokamzana, oke, na, umtheto. Oma, gesukubala, eska, basestu, shakalolu, ne, so, naslinzeka, oke, oke, zonke, iku. Ze, zefunda, zobjelua, no. Zo, oksebenza, sana. Zobjelua, no, bez, zintlaga, kahulumen. Ez, su, nguluwe, ngo, ngo, kumtheto, zo, oksebenza, o, o, zo, oksebenza, sana. Nazo, zesebenza, njenge, ziku, oso, maspala, zo, pegana, nokukuka, oke, kusimosezulu. Le, ziku, oke, zinomsebenzo, oktitie, la, zonke, injelo. Kumaspala, okcondene, okcondene. Besa, zbiga, esku, in, esfunda, oke. Loku, oke, ngangosi, kutatripa. Eska, basetshumi. Eska, basetshumi, so, naslinzeka, ikomishana, kamenkameli. Ye, isimosezulu, e, bu, njoe, ukulumen. Injanga, no, zabasebenz, impagati, abahulubomtab. Injanga, injanga, no, injanga, no, o, kahulumen, base, ka, isalka. Ganyeke, nama, business, oke, babaluleke, ngothlelo, luezwe. Lokpegana, oke, nokukuka kusimosezulu. Ikomishana, kamenkameli, ye, isimosezulu, e, gata, iko, na, ngapambili. Nje, ngapambi, nje, gokala, kwalo, umtheto. Ocho, ngozwayo. Iyo, kubega, issebenz, gande, o, komishana, o, komishana, baz, o, kubega, oke, babe, inyanya, makomishin. Uze, oke, ukpele, oke, eskati, sabo. Oma, gespeka, eska, basetshuminanya. Eska, eska, basetshuminanya, so, naslinzeka, oke, imsebenz, oke, ye, komishana, kamenkameli. Okbalo, oke, ognigeza, ezelulego, mailana, no, thlelo, luezwe. Lokpegana, nokukuka kusimosezulu. Ganyan, no, thlelo, luskati, esite, lokfinyelelo, oke, esmen, lapo, umpagati. Nomnoto, okumelana, nokukuka kusimosezulu. Ikomishana, kamenkameli, oke, ingasungula, makomitu, oke. Ailegelele, e, gwenze, imsebenz, yaya. Eska, basetshumnambili. Eska, basetshumnambili, strichielue, oke, ikomitu, uze, slinzeka. Slinzekela, o, thlelo, lokoga, oma, lunga, e, e, komishana, kamenkameli. Ngokshelo, oke, lokeme, o, o, parani, swa, kwa, band. Footi, kese, slinzekela, oke, ika, za. Noko, kelo, oke, o, komishan. Eska, basetshumnambili, ei. Ikomiti, lfa, oke, lfa, le, eska, oke, slinzekela, oke, oka, komondis, opete, we, komishana. Ozo, banguye, oke, ozo, bopezeleka, ozo, bopezeleke, obopezeleke. Oke, oke, apendule, ngoksebenza, oke. We, komisha, we, we, komishana, chigelele. Eska, basetshuminambili, bi. Ikomiti, lfa, le, eska, oke, slinzekela, oke, uksingatwa, kuzi, mali, ze, komishan. Ezika ba seshum nambili, bi, i komiti ilfage les ezika ba ge, klinzekela ge, ukstingatwa, wezimali, ze komishan. Ezika ba seshum nandatu. Ezika ba seshum nandatu, weso, naslinzeka, uba, eh, i komishana le ogmele ethule imbigo, impumela utwaningo, amasu oksebenza, izngomo, kanyenolunye ulwazige, eh, oluyame, lolu epalamente kazwe lonke, na ngongo ngosho okcondene, eh, zinga rapeli intu, wes ngamashumamataju. Imbigo yale komishan, ogmele ge, ixikulelu, eh, ixikulelelu, omphagati. Ezika ba seshum na ne, eh, slinzekela ge, okoga go opigula vasebenz, be komishana le kamenkameli, ngo gomgondiso pete, ngo gonsana ge, ne office, legamtrima, phakazwe lonke, bese ge, ebega imsebenz yala, bo vasebenz. Ezika ba seshum nantlan, stinga ge, uba ngongo ngosho zefunda azwe, opegele ezamvelu, nooma imeya zefunda, nooma yomkandla, omkulugaz. Benzo utwaningo mailana, neitingo ge, nochlelo lokpegana nokukuka wesimosezulu. Ungarapeli ge, uniaga, eh, kushikulelu, i kringas, nochlelo, loblungelalanisa, eh, kazwe lonke. Siipinde stinge, uba, iso lokaliswa ge, gochlelo, lokpegana nokukuka wesimosezulu. Eh, ogmele lakiwé, inarapeli, minya ge mbili, mvagwes, ngemovagwes, go wenzewa, gotwaningo. Les ezika ba ge, sipegale ogmele kukuka, kukuka atwa ge, eh, utwaningo mailana, neitingo, nochlelo lokpegana neesimosezulu, kanyenese, kanyenese lokaliswa ge, uchlelo lokpegana ge, nokukuka wesimosezulu. Ezika ba seshum nantlan, eh, si trichiyelu, i komitu klinzeka ge, ukslinzeka ukshikulelo, kwemumpumela utwaningo mailana, nezitingo, nochlelo lokpegana nokukuka wesimosezulu, gui kazet. Oklange iswa weskati, weskati esbegiwé, ngeka ma eliti, ogunge nan. Kanyenogu, kanyenogu nyenge, eh, uglungiswa, go palo makam. Ezika ba seshum nantlan, ei, fagwe i komitu klinzeka, injela uchlaswa ngazimali, ey ungunya, unngongo shu, ey ungunya, unngongo shu ge, yowestege, noklasa ge, ngayimali, uchlelo lokaliswa wesulezwe, lokpegana ge, nokukuka wesimosezulu, ngo kahulmen kazwe lonke. Ozefunda azwe, kanyenabaseka, kanyen, sorry, ngo kahulmen kazwe lonke, ozefunda azwe, kanyenabasekae, ngo gonsana, no ngongo shu, wesezimali. Ezika ba seshum neshtupa, sonage slinzeka ge, uksumulo ge, wezin introso, zoglungelalanisa, ne simo, uzo lonke. Introso, ukhlala injela, uchlelo ge, loblungelalanisa, nokukuka wesimosezulu, lu hambisa na ge, nezinkomba, zokala ukutin, sekuhanjwe, kanga kanaan. Eseshum neskombisa, stinga ge, uba unngongo shu kazwe lonke, ache izbonelo, zezintela, ezahlugene, ezingasechenziswa, ukpegana ge, nomtalela, ukukuka wesimosezulu, gui republic. Eskatin, esfushan, esphagati nendao, kanyenge eskati site. Les izbonelo, ogmele zakiwé, ungarapelu, uniaga, ukalelo omteeto, ochlo ngozwa ey, uksebenzo. Eh, lapha ge, kubegwa ge, izimo ifanele, ogmele zipegwe, kanyenese si, nezese, nezesege lo ogmele ge, guke atwa ge, ilezi, ilezi bonelo. Ezika ba ge, ezika ba seshum neschaka lombil, sonage slinzeka, uba, unngongo shu kazwe lonke, ngo gonsana, nabanyo unngongo shu, abapegele, imsebenze, ebegwe, gushetu ltu, yomteeto ochlo ngozwa ey, tingegake, ukuba sungule, i kringas, nochlelo le, longen, loblungelalanisa, ne simo ge, uzo lonke. Ezika ba seshum neschaka lolunye. Les ezika ba ge, slinzeka ge, ogutoknegan, eskati, eskati nezang, esuniaga, kushikulelu, i kringas, nochlelo loblungelalanisa, neesimos, neesimos kazwe lonke, unngongo shu, opegele lo imsebenzo. Obegwe, gushetu ltu, ogmele ge, achole ukutin. Ukukuka wesimosezulu, ugalupaza, misaranja, bese ezan ezintela zokpegana nazo, na, nezintela zokpegana nazo. Unngongo shu ge, okcondene, ogmele abe, abe esaka fu, esaka futi ge, akalise, i kringas, nochlelo ge, loblungelalanisa, ne simo ge, ne simo ngo we, ngo we mikaka, elsusela ku lo ge, eh, eksholu ngwesimo, ezangapaza mis. Unngongo shu okcondene, ogmele ge, futi ge, atule imbigo mailana ge, nose wenziwé, ukalisa uksebenza, we kringas, nochlelo ge, loblungelalanisa, ne simo, nechlelo loblungelalanisa, ne simo, unngongo shu. Les ezika ba, siipinde slinzeka ge, ukbuyegezwa, ngese kati, eh, itile, kwaleli kringas, nezitribielu. Ezika ba samashumamabil, sonage, slienzeka, slienzeka, snigaz unngongo shu amandla, okela noktola ge, imnini nganu. Nohunyuluazige, olupeshwe, inomai mupu mundo, eh, olutinge gayo, guse ge, gufesegiswe, introso zalomteto, ochlo ngozwa ey. Unngongo shu upinda abeno imsebenzige, oklanganisa, nokshikulelu imbigo, wooglungelalanisa, otitiele. Ezika ba samashumamabil na nyeh, snigaz unngongo shu ge, snigaz unngongo shu, ngo gonsana, ne cabinet. Amandla ogngoma, ngesa ziso gui kazet, mailana nomkombandela wezwe, ngesisi ezitala esfutumeze mkatin. Guse kfige eskati, lapo unngongo shu, ixikulela, ixikulela omkombandela, uchlelo loa ma, loa gamova, loa ma kalelo, leezwe, epegane ne simo, luyobue, luyosebenza injengo, injengo omkombandela, injenge kombandela ge. Eh, les ezika ba, slinzeka, ukbuyegezwa, okpo, sorry, okpokalege ilu, njalo mvagwe, minyaga, emilhan, xutige, njalo mvagwe milhan, ukphanele ge, i kringas ulilikeli buyegezwe. Ezika ba samashumamabil nambili, sonage, snigaz unngongo shu amandla, ogbege ulhu le mikaka ge, eh, i esmbono, ekitri zamakes, atala ge esfutumeze mkatin. Ogmele abegwe ngapans, gochlelo, lognushiswa ge, wesisi, ngo gomkaka, kanti lolulchlelo, lolulhu, ogmele ge, lukombisa. Lukombi, lukombisa ngaze lo, i esisi zekes, etala ge esfutumeze mkatin. Vvagokshitryela kwalolu, kwalolulhu, unngongo shu ogmele angume, eznjongo ezbegiwé, ezbegelu le mikaka, esuchleni, eh, ukuba zefezwe. Ezika ba samashumamabil nandatu. Slinzekela ge, ukuba unngongo shu kazwe lonke, ogmele ixikulele ulhu, loakes, atala esfutumeze mkatin. Akolela ukuti, atala, nooma angatala, eh, nooma apepeteki, se kukuka wesimosezulu. Unngongo shu ogmele upinda ixikulele ulhu le imsebenz, ekipa, nooma ngale ekipe, omusi, we nyala makas, abe, abegwe ochlin. Ezika ba samashumamabil na ne, eh, si ballegile ge, eh, tinga ge, unngongo shu, sitingu unngongo shu ge, kazwe lonke, abe imali, yamakes, ngo mundo owenza, owenza le imsebenz, esuchlin, esuchlin. Les ezika ba, shtaza, i, izimponego, eziste ge, lo ogmele ge zipegwe, uma kwabiwa ipache thiekes, kanyenge, nogmele ge, kukuka atwa guyo. Ezika ba samashumamabil nantlan, oso, nastinga, uba, unngongo shu kazwe lonke, achloza makas, atala esfutumeze. Ange ona, awamvelu, okphakas, okutu, atret, atretwe, nooma echis. Les ezika ba, snigaz unngongo shu kazwe lonke ge, ngo gonsana ge, no ngongo shu, abakondene, kanyenge, na nooma imupu mundo, otsintegaayo. Amandla, uba, bake uchlelo, logelisa ge, nooma, lokretama kes, atala ge esfutumeze, ange ona, awamvelu. Esamashumamabil neshtupa, slienzeka ge, ukwakiwa gochlu, loakes, atala esfutumeze, lukazwe lonke, besel ochlanganiswa, ochlanganiswa imbigo ngalolulhu. Esamashumamabil neskombisa, snigaz unngongo shu ikunya, lokuwaka imteeto ngubo, epatelene, nokalisa kwalo omteeto, nokalisa kwalo omteeto ochlo ngozwa ey. Na mi ipimteeto ngubo, eziwé, ngo wesika ba samashumama, ngo wesika ba seshum nantlan, ei, ogmele ge ye thulu epalamente, ezintu, gwines ngamashumamataju, ngapamigo, ukuba ixikulelu, gui kazet. Ezika ba samashumamabil neschaka, neschaka lombil, sini mailana nochlelo ge, okgonsana, okgonsana ge, unngongo shu kazwe lonke, ozefunda azwe, nooma imeya ogmele ge, lulandelu, uma kusechenziswa, amandla ngo glandela omteeto, ngo omteeto ochlo ngozwa ey. Loku okgonsana, ogmele kuhamba sa ne, nezimo, kanti, eh, mailana, no unngongo shu kazwe lonke, gubandaranya, gubandaranya okgonsana, na bobonke, unngongo shu, abatintegaayo. Ngoksetchenziswa kwalo, kwalao amandla, eh, unyenu, kanyenunngongo shu ozefunda azwe, okcondene, ozo tintege, ngo ksetchenziswa kwalao amandla. Ezika ba samashumamabil neschaka lolunye, sonage sbega ge, uchlelo ukba, uchlelo ukbambit, taza omphagati, eh, unngongo shu, unngongo shu kazwe lonke, ozefunda azwe, nooma imeya ogmele ge, balulandele, uma besabenza sa, amandla abo, abegiwé, gles ezika ba, ezika ba samashumamataju. Snigaz unngongo shu ge, kazwe lonke, nozefunda azwe, ikunya. Loku lunsela amandla, anikezwe ona, ngo kwalo omteeto, ngo kwalo omteeto ochlo ngozwa ey, ngo glandela, ngo glandela ilinze go ge, ifanele zalomteeto, we nima. Ezika ba samashumamataju na nyeh, sonage, simailana ne lungelo, loktola ulwaz, futin, slienzekela ukutu, ulwaz, ogmele nigezwe, ngo glandela, izlinzeko, izlinzeko zo omteeto, uokutaza, oktola kala kuluaz. Lo omteeto ge, oga two thousand, kanyenge, nomteto kufige, loko imnini nganu, yo mundo si, oga twenty thirteen. Ezika ba samashumamataju nambili ge, si ballegile, eh, ngoba ge, si kuluma ge, ngentawulo, slienzeka ge, amakala nezintawulo, ngapans kwalo omteeto ochlo ngozwa ey, i komiti ge, ixikulele, litribiele ge, i komiti lisitribiele, lisitribiele, ezika ba, guse ge, slienzeka, amakala nezintawulo. Batige i tala lokala, oh, nooma omuse nzitale lotwa, eh, inlawulu akoge, ibalelo ge, eh, zikitine ngamashan, uma ge, amakalese ngaprezulu kwaloko, ngallege ise ipinde ge gabili, eh, gotwa ge, ingelu li ge, eh, zikitine zi eshum. Ezika ba samashumamataju, samashumamataju nandatu, sonage slinzeka, uba ge, na nooma imupu mundo, eh, angafaka esprelo unngongo shu kazwe lonke, nooma ozefunda azwe, sokpiksa ana, nezngomo eschatuwe, yinoma imupu mundo esabenza sa, amandla, awanikezwe, unngongo shu kazwe lonke, nooma ozefunda azwe. Siipinde slienzekela, uti, les ostrelo, ogmele si, excuse me, ogmele stingatwa, ngo wesika ba samashumamane nandatu, siniima. Ezika ba samashumamataju na ne, sonage sbegale ugonka kanyenge, nezilinzeko, nezilinzeko ge, zeskashan, okpatelene, okpatelene, nogmenyeze, loko ama, kama kes, atala ge esfutumeze, injenge zngolisimoya, ezi begwe ekului. Imteeto ngubo, iz, imteeto ngubo izintelo zokvimbele ge, ukngoliswa komoya. Imteeto ngubo ukngoliswa, ukvindja loko moya kazwe lonke. Zikazwe lonke, imteeto ngubo ukbiga, ngemisia, ngemisia makas ge, atala ge esfutumeze, eh, kazwe lonke, ezo ixikulelo ge, ngo glandela omteeto, wezi ngabonjalo lo moya. Lo, lesi, lo omtetoz vivi, nyoke, unama xetul, amataju. Ama, ama xetuli ge, afunde kanye, isetuli ukala ge, onake, slienzeka imsebenze, konde ne. Nogbege elwe, ukuba ge, gufesegiswe, mailana ge, omusi wekes, ngo we mikaka. Isetuli esbile ge, ibegage, ulhu le imnya ngo kazwe lonke, kanyenge, nezinkampani kahulmen, eipegele imsebenze, thile, tingegala ey, guse ge, kwa kiwe, i kringas, nochlelo ge, loblungelalanisa, ukukuko, ngo we mikaka. Luktrichiyelu ge, ngo kphagale, ngo kphagale imkommo, ngo kphagale imnya ngo, nooma, imsebenz, oglandelale. Oezimfundo, okbuza okbambisa ana, kanyenge, nezindaba zomtab, eh, ezo oktwepeshe, nezokvarash. Isetuli eschatu, slienzeka ge, uktrichiyela ogmteeto. Ni amenyo agomphagati, utige, ne, ne tumele, imbono ye, eh, injengo basbona ge, lapha, ukutu imbono, si tumela ngokpala, nooma, eh, si, si hambise ge, sikpalile, kodakonke ge, loko, esngaketukwenza, si kwenza, ukutu, sipale, imbono ye, tusiponde, sekomnomzana, ulungsan, zo ndi, oguyena go imtitiele komiti, eh, oyobege eselhulu, nesa imbono, eylulu, nesa komitin. Eh, imbono ge, gufanele, fige schar omteeto, lunga gelu li ge, usukulu omxlas, ngamashumamabil ge, guyo le nyanga, loku wenzewa ngo oba. Le li komiti, sazo, tlala, itingite, ebesel ekipa ge, eh, umialelo, ozo siwa ge, ozo hamba neesiku ngu, uyeguzwe lonke, eh, ozo, xukutige, abandubakazwana talibatin, yabongasal.
Sebongamnewe, tusebongakulu, eh, uzamela noko, eh, agiontenuluktolige. Eh, gotwa ge, ngoba, nawe gusozoki, zinongaza, zemxlabeno, aketuktolige, eh, si yabongakulu, omsebenzwa ko owenzin. Eh, ngiyakabanga, ribagito kuti, abaningibaya, tala, tla, moklangana, lolute abasoo, kunanzi, mukuti, kubekona, uku, paula, ngo kchulile, eh, ulolute abakota, eh, si esiswe, injengabatala beti, ukona, eh, inkosumthuli, eh, ahi, nomunga kulumanga, guse itawa. Eh, aikinde pota ukutu, upaula nooma, eh, ungezwa ngagashi. Gotwa futi, ngifuna, ukushu kuti, eskatin espilaxona, namxlanje, ungezala, eh, kanti, unentonje, ekshupaye kuti, ekshalinka, sekaya, snenginga yomkabo, snenginga yamanzi, snenginga ezinlu, the list is long. Na ubas ngesuwa, xuksi, za ubas zele lo kola, si puma eshamte, timpela, eshamte, to si Si puma eshamte timpela eshamte to sipate lenne nokpila omuntu nokshawa kwe mteeto. Ngoglandela kwe lobomkomu yomteto segelo wezwe eslakel. Eh godwa ge ukube nohllelo lukuti omas pumile eshamte to si mumpagatin sihamba maylanan nan. Unganze aghe nawe kuse ulinge aghe njengomuntu. Oti ngage ngasaliega lelituba ngoba nabange ababona pangwam senzo kulmukshupega wam. Godwa utolo kuti asizele loko namnamla eh ninomusu paula loko. Angatima sinasaguazu kuti sefinyalele labufisa sefinyalele konna. Besse ubone ngatiti asikhlonipi xambe futi nokpaula kuakosibuke lapans. Ki kauti kiazwa galabagiti. Eh ngoba nganze kuti unendo nganpela ekshupayo entli zwenu eh wayafisukutu ikulume. Godwa iishot coming ekonu kuti. Asize langa long oh godwa nakesi zel godwa sishofutu kuti. Amaye ama, ama lunga nisa swazabalaze la anye. Ilunge lukuti ukulume na nomajupi otana ukuluma as long as. Unganya tele ama lunga omuntu, onaxambalazi, onalbizet xambe ikama lomuntu eskangeni ngona fanel. Ngikwenukvula ituba aghe magu kuti kukona ofisa eh ukuti kubekona akpaulayo kulepin. Eh abose ombozo nomaj enze njalo kodapifos enze njalo ngikwenanye xambe utatwetu omondise magukona. Xambe afisa ukuti agupaula njengondis opuma emnyangu enigazwe lonke. Eh maylanan alepresedition si enziwe eh anazige xambe ulimlasozulu ulthwa ele ini. Mangbukika malake godwa kashtole ikama nama nguazukulbiz godwa stoli nyawazukulbiz. Eh kukono sana ngonpor kwanje wati ninabatu bakazulu ni, ninenginga anye. Eh olunyuli monolu anye anfunkulukuluma eh nazutmanazisngis nezszulu nitetile. Eh South Africa namala languages are eleven light heart a Leo plane eh and it's true. Eh and I think so many sense the James amukuti si funde ilimi ongenani. On average, wazama languages are four ogunge nani including sign language. Eh konasizowazu kuti stumanis South Africa nama province is all nine. Moofiga edimpo popo bekuluma etivenda ufiga njofane no popai ulukkala zangapananga pe ngatubuki cheni si angapananga. Ahuzwa ngishua kuti tjuan, kutuwan eh kanjalo nomofiga kwe ziginda ukulispeti ahuzwa. Eh ngovaneshtoza mta mba beselukulishtoza stipe ah wayalaxlega vechanpela anye. Eh eh atu mutu yokahlela wano kautu zufa kunyavanka yokulega samwe. Wen unenin interpretation kanti manga beulazu ulimulitzin eh seyakabanga ukuti. Asitnigazela ttwetu thuba xambe kuti kubekona eh elchigayo anye olzigayo besse gesipukega sebo.
Nyabongasal. Eh nyawazukulumizzulu marakananganje. Eh loshtolelo obuya edimpo popo not the case and that's why siyangshaya gananiso. Mebatala batukutakutka wesimosezulu ngvela ngalaxlega anye. Ni chigela ukut climate change. Okbati ngimela. So I, sanbo. I, I want to explain briefly where this legislation is actually coming from. I would like to believe that almost all of us from the province KwaZulu-Natal have experienced the impacts of climate change one way or the other. Uh we are in a situation of heatwaves now at some point there are floods. At, in certain areas there are uh thunderstorms and lightning and many other things that gets to affect us and also affect our livelihoods. So in South Africa over a period of time we have been trying to, to manage uh the impacts of climate change as well as the greenhouse gases that gets emitted to cause this situation. And over that period of time it has always been at a policy level. Policy level it's just a document that is there that is guiding on how to do things. But it doesn't bite biting means it is not a legislation, it is not a law. And when somebody doesn't do what they are required to do as per that policy, nothing will happen to them. Hence we thought let's rather get to a situation where we come up with a piece of legislation that will regulate and enforce the different activities that will make us as government at a national level, provincial level and local government level to do something that will help our people to manage the impacts of climate change. And in some of the sections where they indicated our municipalities will be required to undertake what we call uh climate change needs and um and response assessments. Which means the municipalities will be required to say we are experiencing a lot of floods. How do we respond as a municipality in order to protect our people from being uh affected by, by this uh floods? So that is a legal requirement now for the municipalities to be able to do that. Than, rather than previously when it was just a policy. Uh we tried to work with municipalities and provinces to develop climate change response plans. But given the fact that it was not a legal mandate, nothing much happened between us and the municipalities in getting to implement those hence we are here together with um the part that uh she explained on carbon budgets and, and other things. For the companies that are responsible for emitting the greenhouse gases, they will be regulated and there will be penalties when they do not do what they are supposed to be doing. So it's a call to the communities that as and when we are developing these legislations and tasking different levels of government and companies and everyone. What is your say as the person who gets affected by climate change? How should we structure this legislation and how can we make it better so that we respond to uh the impacts of climate change as the country? Uh iloko nganengakpaulayo ku, ku lenda nyabo.
Sebo ngasabonga kultatwetu. Wayabona kune mkuba anye eskule enziwa. Njaloma twa o, o December thirty one. Shisi kwi pi sebo. Eh we talk cricket. Nigenbona emaloxin the, the, the mist eh akega ngaleo do. Isala le yo do for about forty five minutes to an hour ilogishili. Unosish multabangi yapelo to some point what does it do? Liuntu tujaleo. Eh. Ukona abengolo yobu ekshugashugel na bo balitali kwi pi zbona balitali psu. Awazu shukpefmo la kukalisin jasibaleke kwenzeke yonkindo. Ngiza mthazeni izinto ezenzagalaayo ez, ezimkube sienzaayo. En, en atima siyera ngunu nagalilutu futi. When you go to China today. We back there look to eh xambe for two days or so please don't drive your car. Because of the emissions. Genkoba nyenge babantu China is one of the most populated countries there more than a billion people. One country. Oh kebanemot. Zatu malemot. And multabanga isimosezulu yini eyenza izzulu lischinje. I would xukwe kuno kulu kulu tiniewe they that's lies there's no God with anger with us here. It's us who are not taking care of our environment. And as a result besesiba nokchinja kusimosezulu beselenza desitenzai. Wayabona even abadwa wasandra I was reading a piece of story this morning. The way they design their roads now. They must take into account. These erratic weather patterns. Leanne talina tagaku. Upumumka lischiisalishe sega kuu unaga adamkwak. Is it the best thing this in, this in the past? No ba for instance iszolo ngithula MRSP ngiza ngapa around three it was thirty seven degrees yesterday. That is why there was air, air, eh, eh, yeah, eh, is it yellow or what? What is this NFP called? Orange. Sorry to use the NFP anyway, yeah. Eh there was an orange alert. Enda wene ngapakomkanya kuti utilizo tumaa kanzima. And inanga apa godwa kenspe kijtura ukutumaganzima nibula nabantu. Unesidu esenzaayo and therefore this mitigation it's about changing. Indela espila ngayo. Ukuti, aguti nomaj isimosezulu skukuwa godwa singasfit kusisaswini la nizoslimasa konna. Nislambe se ngoba umanga besetwa asawazengsho ukchala. Sekuene someson janjan there will be riots in the country. And we don't want that. I am opening an opportunity for you eh my dear audience to um, um ask questions of clarity. Ukulege anye ulbushe nanname ngalupuli muolazio eh oza opendulega. Nkoba asazanga shlele amakama eh sisa nganegazela inamba manga beupamsaisa nja. Konasizawshunpana ngaloshwa bo ogno kuti ngikbizet xambe ngitroykogile. Njanjan ngoba kuzobuke ngatiti agukhoxlonpana ogash. Umanga bege eh osuredi eh upamsaisa nja ngeshaga ngautisha eh ngangfundeisa. Ntumeyupamsisala oye ti ayne yoguti. Mani ngangichati nganiangchatsazela ma iti. Eh godwa ma upamsisala njozupamsis ton. Ah, ah, ah uspamisege eh si bon ukuti ukona. Manga kumgeko futbagiti enikpaulayo ay si acha blatinasuwaro mchlangan. Nyabona newe tu eh, eh, eh kule roo number one eh nyabona mavoso takwe eh esbili eh ukonomoi. Newe tu you are number three mfoi tu number four mfoi teklene number five number six na. Ages tleni kulesostu pake uikumbolo nombolo yako sektala kumfoi tunapu number one sebo. Upagame uzesho ikama besse waya, waya begage utabol begage. Ah angchatele lituba ngibonge. Ikama umama into mbialazu umayati gungubongo usi shongwane. Oh yinduona yakonala yemanwane. Angbingeleleke bo ngubuhuli besshaya mteeto ngetzikunza zawo. Eh ngibingelele yonkimyango va hulmen ukshuga suga nekon. Angsheshega kuu ngweleni mbushe abafundisabakona nyabona lektu zoramgena nenda. Fundis, nyabon. Eh agesibonge gakulu lelitu besni geselon. Oldo liskali kalisage ti. Obamxambe lokthola imlayezu muntu itole jipsu. Batande uspata ga bi. Omase ngfonelo engosi ngoleve netitela kuti ngio omalapa. Bonpatega abengoba besingasilutu. Asasige nomaj umaspala usafanchin. Nomagonagelepi gukugangaz nganpela asas gonagelepi. Nkobobo nanjigunge ekobantu. Asguazma jugutabanasoba tataki. Ektrine edizo tishaya mteeto sabatola bantu sababiza kanda bantu babenge eku. Oguzwa mteeto ochayi. Asishukutlabasaya ba eh ya godwa uspata ga bi gitina. Njenke ngubuhuli bomta ukuti mchlabenge sichelezi ntekrine nomaj umaspala go ismilesi ektrine nesint nyabo. Eh siyabonga abogunye okkamgala. Kuno gunye futi mchlabe abantu ge estela mchlabe manikshitrelena. Omteto segelokon delena nalezin. Oge kuskata kata segega kuu. Siyavu muguti kunezintesaskolela kuzokdal. Futi namange sakolela kzo. Esingasazenzingenjela obuyona. Ogungaba yimbangeela futi yoku kuku kuka kuesimosezulu angchato God. Kola lilikamelutukthula. Not quiet. Atukthula. Omuntu gade eshonelewe. Waseyazila. Wasila ilozonya ngaba fume la na ngazo nomde. Kuba neskatige la kufide twa gutulu akona. La abantu sebenza nomaj ngayi nengasi pisoni skati. Ibuya egisheye. Ngoba oma uzotijuzo thula ngo December what do you expect ifunugwenzagala? Wa be gumbe utchutuni notulai ngoba wasiguti lozonya nga esomoya. Agukokdogonaga lemasimini. So inawo ngiti besio papata mchlabo ma ukpega oguzema sikaplaya. Gixwilela pagutigi atinteguti istifundaazwe nesifundaazwe tingay kri, stingazi faz. Edela imteto masifaga siguazna tu implementala sifaga kon. Nyakabangutimchlabengeke bege de timing. Ukuti ngage yini aslegene. Indeed bakonabasa kolelo bakonabanga sakoli godwa uy impact eh mb. Nkoba ngiyachinja isimozulu nyabo. Eh ngibonge slalo msheng to ngalama vos. Ukulelele yemanwane. Wani namakos asenjulukula konna paratwetu namalu ngashonpegile eshamte. Eh utembangwa shabana nisbono. Ngizalwa ipkosinba wa shabana. Ngila njengelu ngale. Lum, lumde no, ubkoswa shabana lemaswazi ningpinda ngibe ilu ngale ward committee. Mele izenjuzama kosu kuward fortin. Ngipinda ngibe ilu ngale tourism cluster eh yakonala otugela district. Emm. Ngapantu ge ukutzi ntrite iskati slalo eh unwaane. Nzela uktrizalela kumakama wasilo. Eh gokokhachwa nomajxtonipa infelo amakosbe xtoniparakuli infelo. Eh nesizo njesi xtoniparakuli infelo. Eh ngapantu ge ukutzi ntrite nje skati mshengu. Eh ne, namalu ngwa umpagacha konala paratwetu. Ngizo tala njugu ukuze thula isethulo zam. Axiamak, it's not a question per se. Godwa njama comments eh ngnao eklalele niipile le egate si, sipega la. Eh nzo tala njutu ngibeke ngolimla semzin ay ngoba ngibuke lapans ezzulu godwa ngenganye iskati. Eh engikpaulile la eh nomaj engikbonile nomaj inkfundile. Uma kupewa lepe. Emm, ki kabanguti. We need, eh we need to invest in agriculture. And planting more trees. In order to keep our planet cooler. Currently. The study says we are twenty six percent maize producers in the SADC region. I think we can do more if sizo xtonipa nomaj we invest more in, in agriculture. That, that, that will ensure food security in our country. Eh currently we are affected by El Nino. So if we don't act with speed, we are deemed to suffer. As the current generation and future generations. Therefore we have a huge responsibility. As we sit here, we are in a world heritage site Ukallamba Dragons Back Mountains. I want to encourage our provincial government to invest more in the infrastructure of tourism attract, attracting sites. Especially in our road infrastructures. Which leads, which lead to the, to our beautiful banks and rich history of our district of which will create more jobs and increase. And, and increase in, in, in foreign investment. I'm glad Uetia is here. I, I, I'm not mixing the issues mshengu as you have mentioned kuti. We, we not here to raise eh kalazu na na na. But these things if we not eh protecting.
But these things, if we not, eh, protecting our, 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 our infrastructure. If we not taking care of our roads, can you imagine the diversion of, of, of floods? If our, our roads are not properly built. And we not protecting our infrastructure, so that will cause a damage to our community and our infrastructure. So it's part of, eh, 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 global, eh, eh, the effects of eh, eh, climate change. So we also need to act with speed. Eh, lastly, things that I think we must do to fight the climate change. Number one, we need to take correct decisions with emissions and waste. One of the things that we can do is to collect waste. Store it properly for recycling purposes. And even use it to generate power. I thinks by sort doing, we can turn the tide of climate change. It is also good to hear that fossil spoils. Are slowly becoming replaced by brina alternatives. Eh, by sourcing, eh, mshengu, I support the bill. I submit, thank you.
Sebona, thank you. Bon. Eh, osabo ngile, ngiaakolisa, o, sen, ikunjuzwa, eh, ilowagiti. Eh, oma osupauli ile, oshu uti ipila, is supporter, norma, we support him. Eh, sitholi sen, ngefut noguti. Eh, kota, ngenge zorresponder, gus speaker number one, ma ilana, ne lateness, eh, le pele. Eh, ngizo, ngizo pendula, eh, ngaseklineni, uti kwenze kini. Aye, ngoba, ngitisi asin, chatelela, kota, sizo kaz. Eh, osungakto bega, mne wetu, ngakto isukazamis. Bon, eh, bingerele, bonka bapati. Ah, eh, kulda zawo. Abafundi, si, umparatya, ngujal, noza, wetu, eklimi. Okulumayo, pe natshange. Eh. Siyabona kulu, bakula zingbonge, eh, oguzwa izolo, ngomalulewa ami, eh, umchal. Epikville. Se velenje, nami ngangfisa, uti, eh, ngati, ngagenbe konama, gunezisha yamte eto. Norma ba, eh, bapata bakulu, yobani konajie. Kota, ngibonge, yakulu ge, ngalukes klangane ngako, climate change yakona. Nami ngaxo, uti, nami ngimbange la, yoguti, kupete la ngkona mcham. Ngoba, nje ngomutu, eh, ono mchabana, yiplaza, lena te. Nami ngiatanda, uti, eh, langa, jalanga konan, ngishisa. Each and every year. Ngichablele, ngute, ngalboni la ngapelpega, pezulu. After three, four days, kambuchano buxa, inkomos zileka mnand. Kota, ngage gushuti, lokonyabon, uti, nami ngimbange. Ogwenzu, uti, ngitingimbange la mchambe. Eh, kataso, uti, sites hamba ga atle, nabelulek bamze, nazinsizo la. Samba gata, scharlega, atle, yonki, tosi akosha. Kota, je, ngibuga she. Ema vigina mabili. Eh, undombajana, wamo yaasha. Sen sabanu, gue, massimini, undombajana, unga agama, ngegim. Koto yaasha, shiswa ilan. Esen, vela, sen, pachektile, ngitisi, yabona, ne mas. Okandakando, mnan, esenza uyera, esenza utengo mku. Ay vela, sen, bonile, akselula, ngaketse zele.
Nane, koto, manje, ikisizo luzasho. Alnyazle, do, oisho inun, unambazan.
Isoyan, isoyan.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, ngatholi, right, sure. Okay, ngishulela, kota, ogungpetega, buga kul. Urola development. Mnambe ti. Epita MRSPG. Eh, mina, ngomutu watolu mchaba, na yesa, go. Na konagawuzi, ma gwa kmele, thole, umchaba, oh, five hundred and eighty-four hectares. Goba, nemkonyo, fuya, abantu, buga, land affairs, derende, kwa zotu, nakmoshe, omeli, omku. Enasen, umkoshile, ngilwa, ngenda, bay plaz. Wa bosha, eh, say something, eh, eh, Freihed. Ngatina ngthole, only seventy-three point one hectares. Na lapo, gujaloo, selokna, ngao thola, lo mchab. Ageko no yeto, aga. Eh, rule development, doa wafiga, ngute, okay. Sa tholele, nyamaza, no mchaba, sabaniga, basa konain benzan. Utulis. Na guba, ngiyapefumula. Mbongalezi, siswa, yakula zee, ucho, ucho, ngatina, ngobe ngambon, se pomie. Oaga, agriculture, na, na bomadala. Sen abana, baluleka, bani, bazamu, gungsi za, ngoba, bayabona, mcham, uti, sabate, ngambamba la, gualaa. Kota, inten petega, buga kuluna, gogonke. Ngatu ne plaz, ukesa uko. Namchadze, yoba, ngokorela, je, na guka ndakando, yon tivi, glonkena. Opuk, epulensi, pau. Faneke, ngashu, kanda kando, muu, utoselo, ngizo, tela, la eloxin. Ugunkipanzi la, pangilkipa, masen tene line, ngifage. Impilo yamle. Mpanje, le, yitai, mia gwa, zukipan, yagwa, zugez, faneke, ngashen, isela. Uzo, tela, eloxin. Oza, weta, bamshope. Awenimse zenpe, wenimfutis, we are very busy. Sen jalile, nazisoyan. Awenimfunise, okay, next week, kumi soy salipans, ikale it. Faneke, ngzame, angina, emalo, prashabant. Okonutish. Nizame, ngendelosa, mangayo, ksiwe, ut, uni, expecting, uti, ngthole, three hundred and eighty thousand. Kota, ngo, endapangthole, eighty-four. Na pezulu, jala, ngpe la man. Ni amtela, genoka, pamet, mtela, yakulu, namchadze, uma ngaba konu, ngakuluuma. Akulumele, eh, agriculture, no, wasepikville. Bayasi zama, koti, malai ko. But the project is very, very bad. This time, benglinde, luku, uti, basovela, tayshange, na, ku, uteti, peaks. Uchali plazla, kota, man ngaxo, uti, ngthole, oma, nyolo, ngagana. No shaufa. Konan, na lapo, ngchale, konu, ma nyolo, ngeko. Kota, ngaswe, zige, nganjani, mususoy. Ipachekti, ngje, yaga, agriculture, Epikville, okachamba. Angasutin ngatiri, yabona, mparti, ngonupali, pe. Nsa tela, ngosi, amsa fa, na, wavalimo, okosa, na, ba. Cheme no amlo, sen kale, ngatitela, na giye. Kotoa, le, mi, ne, ngentela, pe, ngomutu, me ne plaz, matota, kabe, nokis. Yatela, matoto. Ye, bo manje, lokon, ngperene, na, go, namse, nesaba, no, ngbingalela, oba, subese ka. You're so nice, huh? You're going to make lot of money, but please, man, can you help me to just do harvesting? I don't even know, uti, zothola, combi, pe, ganjani, kota, bankhe, bisabon. Sebet alila, ba, but eh, looks like I'm going to be very busy, I can't help you. Yatela bapati. Yatela, elishamte, etu, uti. Ogungenan, nomasaspatani, siile, sitole, into yokuvo na. Nomina, xala, lego, agriculture, Epikville, velenasi, siswe, tando, glime. Siswe, apa, ongonas, fagutis, nisiste, bisale, si, pandele. Ma, ngakimali, kombi, nomi, demshina, tso, kada, kanda. Natus, funukbon, uti, snashulega, inoba, pe, nabez, sebenza, plazino, na, matoto, la, wasepete, yitine, bezwa, sebenza. Tsetela, ngosi, ame, angvelen, bon. Aseshanga, ngigiyanga, mabomo, because I can see the passion in your, in your voice. And ngiaakbonu, kusupega, wako, okulumanga, ako. Eh, we will help you. Okay, we will help you.
Sanbonani. Ikamalama, ngoprezmono, agamaya. Eh, prezmono, agamaya. Yes. Eh. Ngiti, eh, ipili, ngiyahamsana nayo. But if ipili, ingalegelela, nano, National Environmental Management, who, section twenty-four. Eh, ngbuya futi, ngibe, nestela, la, uti. O, 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 babomsheng, o, babe zilela, uti. Sitela, gule project, ngoba, si, ipega, ngjoba, skulumas, kela, uti, in next time. Uma be, zaskulumanga, mapili, ngangae, ngoba, skulumanga, climate change. Bas vesele, i climate change, yango nineteen forty, nineteen seventy-six, happened today. Uguti, sibone, umonagalo, uti, guupila, gonagalakon. I climate change, yango nineteen forty, besuwa, zuklima, amakabishi. Siwa, zukthola, amapeke. This time, axawazi, ngoba, skulumanga, omkwak, uti, uyachungmeze. Bestela, ngige, uti, siibone, maskulumanga, angekoli, siiboni, koli, uti. If, gue, antrosites, skulumanga, maskulumanga, lo, skulumanga. Eh, besen, ngbuya, gosat, o, o, o. Minangsayen, nombozo, uti, uban, osendela, le, le, conduct, babomsheng, uti, i climate change, yenzwain, uwilog, nalog, nalongo. Ngibona, abamshope, angiko, polotik, ang, ngelukungzula, lapo, uti. Bangatati, ngatinya, bandulu, la, ngobona, ngati, abamshope, uzo, zonkes, intezenzagala, ibaba, benefita. Ngoba, skulumanga, climate change, se bakalile, benzimoto, es, 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 ngakipu, oxo. Suzotemba, nganjani, umabona, bangeti, zigiti, de makaya. Yoba, talale, go, Newcastle, la, ngesingaz, uti. Ubano, wafiga, wazo, conductor, uti, ay, i climate change, yasen, Newcastle, life, fani, ne, yasepikville. Yasepikville, life, fani, yaseko. So, sibona, ngatibona, bayaya, zenzela, ngoba, bafunukpe, benefita, eh, indwen. Eh, sina mama inila, apasibane, ingina, zamama in, lezinde, ipaluwa, la, asi, konu, uti, konaga, sa, sashanga, nanabo. Sashala, nanabu, nganjani, sa, iko, kalenda, bay climate change, uti, namama in. Ah, be, noshi, ngoba, izindu, zabantu, ziyadi, mala, ngale, ndaba, zamama in. Ya bon. Eh, siyabingele. Mfarati. Nabantu, base parliament. Ngaga, shabalar. Ngomchala tu. Ngomchala le, yenomondin. Ngasetan house. Sibongi, thuba ge, uti, sizo, okulumu. Ngale, abasbizele, yonana, mchlanja, ipili. Eh. Inte, zutisbono, utige. Ye, bo, wana, seksonde, luketo. Oguti, si ofoda. Omchala twenty-nine may. Manje, ge, isi, dosese, zense, ngoksheshi. Ugulmeni, usepanspezulu. Uguti, ashanga, ne, nabantu. Konu, gusa, bantu, bamtemba, ugulmeni, utukon. We have a sebenze. Aye, kota, sobonana, ngay, twenty-nine, eh, fourteen. Angiko la. Eh, ngifuna, ngikunkena, kulendo, ye, pele. Ngonile, uti, ipili, indala, yakulu, kusuka, ngo twenty-twenty-two, uti, by table, la, la, payana. Eh. We NCOP, wazewa, tatiskati, sitek, ngakulu nyanga, ngaxlanga, noanga, nabantu. Yoba, sesi, xanga, namanjani, ngo twenty-twenty-four. Angas, norma, kon, esen, agwen, norma, kon, esen, akshinja, ngoba. Nge, ngoba, gunge. Siyagut twenty-nine may, oma, ngena, banyabantu, la, pe parliament. Ngena, labelu, ngabamshope, BTA, mina, ngbasabi, geven, bazofiane, eto, zawo. So, angas, utu, kulma, wetu, uzo, sisa, in, goba, sa, zutu, banozo, pata, denizwe, after twenty-nine may. Eh, ngzokulumu, masine, ingati, na, nabelu, ngabamshope. Oba, belu, ngabamshope, asosongis, kati, bazuna, uti, zonkes, into, zifei, fe, bona, yoba, kate, shumfuitu. Se sebenze, le, bon. Yoba, sila, kulenda, uyasokachlam. Eh, kunabanye, ababe zengen, to, economic development. But bazuna, but discover, uti, gune, guess. And abin, lezet, Dragonsback. But, ama, objection, ensi, wa, lapo. Ensua, belu, ngabamshope. Agwenzo, anga, yiti, ngaba, ndaba, myam. Ngogutin. Tina, asna, umchab, abelu, ngbanu, umchab. Ngazo, ubaba, utu, na, umchab, se, mboni, sa, ye, nona, umchab. Asna, uti, umchab, abelu, ngbanu, umchab, abelu, ngbanu, amapienpi, ma, whamba, la, ipobota, bapeta, mapienpi, namakesaus. Kulezintabazo, kachlam. Ba vigela, isi, into, zawo, abai, niwa, o, kokoba, bu, bechate, umchaba, wetu, ngegas. Besefanile, uti, ngatige, ugulmeni, may, sibone, objection, yabelu, ngabamshope, of underme. Beses, pangapande, line, ne, nab, angas, wanga, uti, nasitin. Tinaskaza, sisho, lutu, ngoba, na, ifreaking, layo, siyazu, uti, yenze, nganjani. Tinastindu, utu, ugulmeni, ekulume, na, ngale, zezint. Eh, mina, ipili, ngiyasupporta, ngje. Uguti. Ingapasa, ibe, isuke, la, pa, gwe, gwe, pepa, elimshope, ibe, umteeto. Uge, washumfuitu. Ngoba, uma ngabipili, isi, umteeto, wetlime change, se, wetlime change act. Isizo, wasige, utige. Iguazu, uti, kulumi, sane, ne, mini, umteeto, ekona. Kanje, ngobu, nyangwe, zenvelo, walo, mama, batu, papra, Chris. Ukuluma, ngensindo, zamachati, forest. Upindu, kulume, ngesenvelo. Kotoa, umnyango, kababu, mandashi. Okuluma, ngazo, gumbiwa, pans. Umteeto, akona, yoba, kate, xiuwa, la, uti, gune, umteeto, eh. Ekla, shayo, in. Umteeto, kababu, mandashi, NPRDA law. Okuluma, ngokuti, logo, ngapans, komchabad, mele, kukishu. Uguti, kukishwa, nganjani, ngikukishwa, ngendele, sustainable, norma, ngendele, harmful. Noga, section twenty-four, kate, xiuwa, umfuitu. Uto, u, section twenty-four, uti. Utisnelungelo, logo, uti, eh, i health yetu, in, abi, impacted, man, abi, kukishwa. Logu, ogungumnoto, wetu, ngoba, wetu, pe, ummnoto, wetu. Manje, le, umteeto, yombele, ay kulumi, san. Utolu, uti. Iingampan. Eh, ngule, ekona. Umnyango, zenvelo, uno, umteeto, we, eh, obizo, uti, environmental authorization. Lomteto, lo, we, environmental authorization. Eh, iingampan, ziyaguazu, ngigazwa, yonai, environmental authorization, zenga, kuluma, nga, na. Uguti, gena, sitini. Asishu, uti, ingampanas, ngabiko, na, ngoba, vele, sa, bazuna, matuba, omsebenz. Kota, gu, gu, gukonala, umteeto, itla, shako, na, yoba, kate, ushomfuitu. Eh, besen, unfunukbuya, la, uguti. Eh, yoba, kukulu nyala, uguti. Unama, industries. Akontributor, ngawa, ngama, greenhouse cases. Eh, unfunukthola, uguti. Yoba, kulunya, amakol mines, uta, amakol mines, akontributor, nganjani. Eh, great, climate change, utu, kuso, gube konan, itlime change, ngoba, amakol mines, awatalanga, manje, gubakon. Putala, abakon, and, ukis, law, es, nao, ukis, ukamgapi, kanga, ngubakonan, kwa, malashe. Now, ukavament, unawi, ni, alternative, eh, ye, yoguti, singaba, nokis. Uma, kutiwakena, nje, ngoba, washo, angas, domi, COP twenty-six, ye. Eh, yashele, class, koyati, gena, asuwa, vale, amama inanga, be, sabakon. Oba, ay, ngus. Ke, yamama in, sa, wafala, ke, ummnoto, yasala, ngapans. Nasuselen, ngapans, ummnoto, ummnoto, salena, bani, ngoba, lomnoto, wetu, ungulu, unguluspe, won. Masuselen, ngapans, lomno, yoba, kutiwakena, ke, uzo, bakonama, ama, one million, climate jobs. Ukavament, unawi, ni, integrated resource plan, yoguti, yoba, bavali, komati, power station. Utnasufali, power station, nabandati, besen, zere, power station, bayo, sebenza, pimde, ne, abo, isobonza, nganjani. Esi, yesindo, lezo, es, fisu, utige, eh. Uma, kutwale, pele, iyakuluma, norma, iyashinja, i, iguazu, uti. Ispegelele, uzo, nalezo, zindolezo.
Osu, yanga, sepete, nime, msheng.
Oh, ye, nujake, ngpete, msheng. Oh, ngono, ngpete, ngoba, ukala, ngeska. Oh, ye nujache ngpete nymsheng, oh, ngono ngpete ngoba ukala ngeska. Eh, nymsheng mu eh. Unau kuluma, weyawa kuluma, ne presidential climate commission. Angas ukonumonto la inzinno, oyazi yo ukutisluanesin lesas kulmanas. Presidential climate commission, wale wa ibona api, yake yafika ngagin. Askuwazi ge nymsheng ukutisngaba nabantu, base babe naleka melkul, president, president. Ngoba sestaba ngura mapos, besetiwaba by climate commission. Singa kaza sbabo oneme shweneto, beso okuluma nat. Tinamas kukula, singe nagoko kukul, sia bona ukutokona la payana, kulaya P C C. Ukona abamxope, nabomteabu, abanama N G O, ama kuulu. Atola imali kui European Union. So tinastelu ukuti, le presidential climate commission, aga ipegisi so ukuti. Abantaba la pa guyo, ngembela ba representative na in, ngoba ukupaliwela, utfaneke kwenama reports. La oma reports askaza swatod, ibona abantaba pegge ukutige nage, jengoba ge. Si 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 sine impacted climate change, kukonuklo paloming kukona zonke lezindu ama floods nan nan. Ibona ba pegge lezo zindu, kotwin kinga ukuti asbabon. Ukone climate change funds ekon, njoba kate ukupaliwela, utfaneke ukulonya no maspala o meya. Umbuzo ukuti, ngoba meya ubakona for five years, foto ketwa i political party. Na minje ngase besema plazin ngafunda ngaba o meya, kotangso i understand da in land. So mina ngabangu uti asikistino so ukuti, lando ifage ama meya. But lando ayifage ama officials, asebenza kama spal, jengoma spala manager. No I T P manager, u I T P manager, angitiguwe olungisa ama fans ukuti into turizo ya ganja ngubantu. So ma beso tila i climate change, akube ilabu bantaba utu, maspala manager, I T P manager, no to meya. Ngoba meya, mthampu umoyu umuntu ay lusin ko monje ngam, meka i understand. But la ba ngoba bayi le scolo in bambonutisha ba fundi, lande baso i understand. Ilo gresitre life, nanu ukutige, uma kulonya nje, i climate change. Usuka kulonya ngathison, njoba umfue tu katekshu, ukugole simosezulu. Ama report faneswato, ukutlak alani, jenga majeselugu sipi isimo, ligugu sipi izi nga. Ya bo, ngoba masesie pa ipelin, ipa ipelis chela ngonowa, ngosa mto lo kanow. Elukuma la.
Ki bingelele slalo, all protocols observed. Ika ama umpilo waga vesi, kisuwa kuma spalo Newcastle. Nyangwe intlalele nokisho kumlili. Oh, ammbuzo slalo, mbili eh, ngabangu uti foti uzo badashotest ekulmen. One eh, we support the implementation of the plan. Eh, of the earth, of the white paper to earth. And then two eh, it was mentioned eh, ukuti, there will be sections of the earth whereby if you. Do a particular activity, there might be penalties and consequences. So I'm from Newcastle. And Newcastle is a town that has a lot of coal mines. And it has other activities that contribute to climate change. So I envision a situation whereby there are fines and. There are decisions taken and the municipality is not consulted. Similar to the eh eh situation whereby asbestos was cancelled at a particular time. Can the municipality be consulted in that process of creating fines? In the process of eh, saying that particular source or that particular activity we no. We no more undertaking, one. And then two eh, if possible. Cause I noticed that eh in the in in the legislation. There'll be a climate change needs and response assessment that the municipality will need to do. There will be further a climate change response implementation plan. However, in most cases, from my experience working in local government, we have beautiful plans. However, our challenge is eh, the shortfall in funding that plan in its entirety. So you'd find a plan and then in some activities, there would be lack of financing for it. However, I'm looking at a scenario that we have mines and. We might have an uptake of eh revenue. If possible, can the portion of those fines go directly to the municipality? To implement the climate change response implementation plan. I thank you.
Eh, sia wangakulu. Eh, embozwe nina sekpaule nje, ogningi okon. Now, nskatiskala la, manje ngonuvena osapumili. Korantang xambe ama official department, not today, they will respond directly. Kotwa just eh, ukhailaita nje, xambe in responding to some of the issues. Eh, or questions abo ziwé eh, ngoba tina ngapa. Sizo na lele nje ukona win, and we'll take into consideration, ma ngabe sasdebeta in a fully. Eh, 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 or rather in a full composite committee. And thereafter, we make our report to the house eh, for a a a negotiating mandate in the N C O P. Eh, we don't necessarily respond directly to the issues. For instance, kunai issue kababa, oshange. Law over agriculture, nama issues are settling. We will help you eh, working with the departments, sizo okuluma no show demand, you must tell her. Because they must help you. Eh, ayindoya ngilila ngamans. Sizo mfooneras kulmenais, mphakispeakin, tobesila ikonen. Ukuti, here is a black person who has been eh giving a piece of land to work on, but naga ama limitations aké. And what can you do um assist? I'm not saying these advisors are be, abawe zumserezuwa. Kotwa naboba hamba uwe konanabefini, be ngafini delkonatina lasuwa zofiyane lakon. If u if u esho tinga mosututini, sizo ufaguzu muktabo lake u M S C to respond, uzo oksiza ngani directly. Oksiza wena, oksiza naboboka banya bani moba zyo, eniku association nabu, igakuluka zengesindo zo kvonu. Nange kinga enaso eh eh and so on. Including kame, ukuti we set up a meeting, ba feba zokulmanani. Ay, ngoba beso campaigna, abazile uzo campaigna, zilu uzo campaignala. Twenty nine may or not twenty nine may, there's a government. A government must work every day. So u gubakue tu la, it's not as a result of campaigning, none of us here. Of agiskipa, is nimpa lo ekama, aga kofutnoazu, ukutispa ngapa political parties, jova sila. Aga kwasyo, ngoba si thulanga, ukutispa ngapa political parties, sizi la ngoba sasabenzelises. That's what you are here for. And that's what you're called in to do, even omxala twenty eight. May, so besasabenz, twenty nine may will still be members of the legislature until new members are announced. Ga ukutige aswa gala logo, asguazu ukutuvulmeni azusebenza ngoba na ngusekunoket. We are not here to campaign, we are here. For umt, last week for the past two, siza ama bills, lama bills lawa, ziliki zido ezwa missi. Njoba skulumanj, ama yama dates, abebue asitiso as a result of impula, eh inkulebe zneta. Ne kamegu eh ninga besenzeka, be ngakesenza i bili, i western cape, ingeso. Nja i bili may ziwayenzo, isatavika yoke ngani, uma ngabetina sisa manzin, kumelikme we, ulinutin. Sisiberaite, kuima ku, in actual fact, le bili, na tifusena sisi tete. Well, there are only two provinces, in northwest eh nza manje, nat. All other seven are done. Inago je sila namxlanje, ngolesine se se kokstat. Eh, the following week is the same, kenyagote and so on, asena songis katisukila de makaya. Because umsebenzo sizo kumelisuket, ngifuna nje ukuti ngadu so ukuti, we are not here for political reasons. We belong to political parties, in our campaigning time, you will see us campaigning. Osu ya trosage, nepe la mas kenagin eh, ngoba uneyunge, lokota le mkatwen, sizo sizo, nado sbona neslenga, eh jenga banya balenga. Eh, angasi eh, unama issues are isiwela eh. Maningi pele. Let me start with you eh, Ma Stoll. Then, ovenna will eh speak. Kotwa, obaba prampakash, obe complainala, etiku kugunezi, zidabes kulonya gezulu. Manje eh. Oh, oh, indona le angas, no ma iwa kipcharishile na oma matters. Eh, so that wa wa dolike ngan, ukuti leo mbozubiting. No mo ule, jalou what's up? Kotaga, ageskale ngao Ma Stoll.
Be uzo sisa, ngoba number one, anzoanga luthu. Mara lamanye ngwapete, omxambe ngapindula ngapaula go, besi, okay eh. Most of the comments or the questions, I will respond in eh. Holistic manner, so it's, it won't be like I'm responding to a specific person. Eh, as I indicated earlier on, that what led to the development of this bill. It's because we are already seeing the impacts of climate change. And this climate change is caused by many things. Uche gave an example of ama cricket. I will give another example of eh, o obaba gave, obabchange gave an example of ukshisa, if I mean like. I'll give another example in a bigger manner, when we need to generate electricity. Coal gets burned, and when we burn coal to generate electricity. That's where this greenhouse gases, o, 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 Mam Benjamin was talking about. So it's those activities eh, by power stations, by transport, by waste. And many other different activities that has led to the situation that we are in. So explaining climate change in general is that we have eh, the atmosphere, we have the sun, we have eh. A layer or something that we call the 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 greenhouse. The greenhouse is a layer of different eh, greenhouse gases. Your carbon, your methane and many others, your your eh. Eh ozone and many other gases that are there, so they regulate the heat that comes from the sun to us. And then also allow the heat when it has done its processes for photosynthesis and many others. Back into the atmosphere where it's supposed to be. So given the increases in this greenhouse gases. That layer there has thickened a bit because the amount or the concentration has increased above its normal levels. So when the heat coming from the sun still comes as it's supposed to come. But when it's supposed to go out as per normal, it gets trapped and little heat goes out. Hence the increases in this eh, temperatures that we are experiencing. And when the temperature increases, it changes many things. Obaba was explaining about his uti, his beans. As and when they grow to a certain level, they get, they burn, burn because of the sun. We don't have enough water because it doesn't rain as it's supposed to rain. And at the times when it rains, it comes in heavy downpours, in floods and in storms. And our dams cannot capture the amount of water because it comes in a, in a storm. So it affects everything, we're talking about eh, infrastructure or roads and houses and all of that. But it also affects agriculture. As Obaba explained, when the temperatures have increased and we do not get eh, the rains in a manner that we are supposed to. All the plants that are dependent on the rains do not grow and we cannot yield what we are supposed to. So as Obaba indicated, that we need to invest in the agricultural sector. Actually, the national development plan identifies the agricultural sector. As an area where we need to be growing our economy. And climate change comes and tries to help us that. Hence, we need to try and find ways of working or finding different type of plants. That can withstand the type of temperatures that we, 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 we are finding ourselves in. If you were to observe in some of the white owned farms, sorry to put it like this. But you will realize that in areas where there are a lot of hailstorms. They have covered their crops with nets and many other things, those are some of the adaptation interventions. That can be brought in in the agricultural sector. So it's many things that needs to be happening from all these different sectors where climate change affects. From a municipal point of view, waste on its own when it's in a landfill site, it emits greenhouse gases. It's in a manner that the municipality manages its waste eh, not just the burning part. But when the waste is there, it emits. So when we find a way of managing the waste and capturing the gases there, we are responding to climate change. So it's so many things that needs to be happening or need to be done by eh, the different people. And how do we know or how do we prepare better? To be able to do the things that we are supposed to do in terms of reducing our greenhouse gases. And in terms of eh, adapting or coming up with systems. That will get us to clean up our drainage system so that they don't flood. Have those crops that can still eh survive under the circumstances. It's knowing through this work that o o Mam Benjamin indicated earlier on, that we need to undertake climate scenarios. It's trying to use the models to project the future. That in the next fifteen or twenty years, how is the climate going to change? How hot is it going to be? How much rainfall are we still going to be receiving? And then we factor all of these things into the planning processes, knowing that if the temperatures increases. Do we use fans or aircons or we just open windows or what do we do as normal eh, human beings? Or we drink lots of water to be able to survive under the circumstances? From the agricultural sector, when the temperatures increases, do we drill more boreholes because there's no rain? Or do we eh, have culverts in our own local spaces to be able to capture the water? Or what do we do so that we are still able to irrigate our plants? Or we have different type of plants that can survive eh, this different type of temperature? So the climate science work in the context of climate scenarios is very much important. And when we are adapting, because we have to adapt, we are seeing what we are seeing. We also need to be working towards reducing the emissions of the greenhouses. Hence, there's this concept of eh, the just transition to a low carbon and a climate resilient society. There are so many different technologies that are emerging, that are coming in the space or in the system. To slowly try and replace the usage of coal. There's your solar eh, type of energy, there's hydro energy, there's wind energy. Eh, some use bio gas at a very local level. It is in a way of trying to fully and completely depend on coal. Because we need to make our contribution in reducing eh, the greenhouse gases. There's, there isn't why they call it the just transition. It's because the government doesn't want to get to a power station or. In a mine and say stop now without taking into consideration the people who are employed there. The amount of energy, the different type of eh, power stations is eh, providing or feeding into the system. The just part talks about slowly introducing the new technologies that will help us get the energy. Slowly trying to introduce different job streams which will be able to absorb the people that are working in those eh. Different type of areas that are energy intensive and all of that. So it's, it's a process, some of the processes are working better and some are, are not working better. Because I would like to believe we are human beings, at some instances we do make mistake. But the just transition is trying to do. But the just transition is trying to do that, to justly move us as South Africa. To a point where we are not heavily dependent on coal, but dependent on renewable energy. The other aspect of the eh Presidential Climate Commission. The Presidential Climate Commission is in existence. It is a commission that has been instituted by the president himself, eh Mr Cyril Ramaphosa. Currently, the reason why it's being mentioned here in the act, because this act seeks to legalize that commission. Eh, it's currently happening or it's currently there or in existence. But it's not a legal entity and the act will be, make it to be a legal entity. And also seeks to make it a, a public institution in terms of the Public Finance eh Management Act under Schedule Three. So, as she indicated, there is a public nomination process for those that needs to be eh. The commissioners in the, in the, in the eh, the, the Climate Commission. So it's a publicly open. Commission that is informed by what the people need on the ground because it's a nomination process. Eh, the people that serves there gets nominated. And everything about the commission is public in terms of how do they get paid, what do they do? Eh, how do they report and many other things that are linked there. So it's not just about the, the commissions that are there internationally for other people. We also have an opportunity to, 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 to have our own commission in the country where we can raise our concerns. Because its major function is to advise the country on how to adapt to climate change, to the impacts of climate change. And how to mitigate the greenhouse gas eh emissions. And eh there was eh another interesting comment which. Makes me eh, it's, it's actually interesting, let me put it like that, as to why do we. Make the mayors to be custodians in municipalities as far as climate change is concerned. Already in government, there are existing structures that are led by the mayors. Eh, the I G R Intergovernmental Framework Relations Act has already existing structures. Which the act does not want to overburden municipalities in establishing new structures. And, and, and all of that, but want to utilize those that are in existence to move the climate change work. And the municipal eh I G R forums, which will also serve as climate change forums and the provincial ones. Will feed into eh the Presidential Coordinating Council and then to provide advice to the eh Presidential eh Climate Commission. And given the fact that eh no chair will acknowledge that is not an expected climate change. When he needs to understand certain things as far as climate change is concerned, it will require the people who will advise him. Hence, eh in terms of the act, there is also a requirement to establish. Technical structures that will provide guidance and advices to those eh structures that will be there. Or that are there in the municipalities and the provinces as far as climate change is concerned. So those structures will constitute of people who are knowledgeable on the matters of climate change. So that there's appropriate eh guidance. And on the last part by O, O, Obabesi, we. These consultations, in the beginning of this whole process. Eh, we consulted provinces and municipalities and they made their inputs on. How they would like the act to factor in issues related to them. Even in this process, there are still provinces and municipalities who feel some of their concerns in the act were not captured eh. Accordingly, and they are still providing further comments. This is to try and have municipalities as well, because this legislation is developed at a national level. It's try to have municipalities and provinces, including the, 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 the communities. Have their say on how the act can be structured and serve their needs at their different levels of government. Thank you.
Much eh, Verna, any additions? You are covered eh, ndolig, corner of the bush? Okay.
Number one.
No, I will respond to that one.
Alright.
Okay. Eh, obabusho wangani be kala ngendu, you, you notice we'll be late. Ya voma, ya voma eh, ndonainkos eh, in notice be late. Eh, you're over in class, we could, it's in a king, a S M chat, or is that you could. Ille bill, S N Zayo, even I'm trying to explain virtually. Be, be slanging, as a sham chat, or sipasissa eh, eh, your proposition bill. Eh, ilena proposition bill, na, eh, got the one of my public hearings. Got the one eh, education amendment bill eh, got the one eh procurement bill. Eh, money in my bills and the one that come in the app as a manager before the end of the term. Oh, but I beg to allow eh, the time singana officer in twenty nineteen. So it get, in terms of legislation, it's not advisable. Oh, goodie, we yeah, eh, um, sebeze, also, oh, that is also in the eh, item, elandelayo. It's a requirement to go to, we must start and finish it eh unless it is challenged in the court of law. So we, we sincerely apologize for that. Now, to be a person, I'm a man that eh, to job, I see, call a manager, oh, but eh, eh, it's a good day last week. Eh, it be like a T S N Z, job, I saw, call a any, I'm slange. Eh, see, yes, it's top of a cool, no, Ben, you're only close to an under man, no, but. Who will get a tisn'zorapas temba, you still have a right to object. You can say no eh, not to manage this slanger, we will take from public comments, oh, good, majority of band to eating. As much as they support a bill, but we will cite is show eh, eh, in terms of, oh, oh, but fishine with Kati. And this is a zero, oh, but it's a name eh, who has some eh, um, to oh, yeah, do I have a, I can tell, I challenge the process. And I challenge successfully. So we are very mindful of the short term eh, eh, is, is Kati, and this is a zero. In a rosy, it's over, I mean, I said, oh, this is a, oh, but, not to be a person, I'm a man that eh. Who can I get back, it's not even eh, oh, so, we talk about eh, yeah, but, that's it, look, Kula ma. kui, 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 ko, ko kababushabalala epoma epkosin bawa mshengo. Eh, mailana, na, 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 na investment, infrastructure, tourism and so on. Eh, I know at some point, we kuni na bazuma cable cars ngapa, nan, nan, angazi akna pliondo. Koda ge, eh, we will check, no, 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 na mchonile shuto muti, easy peasy yes, 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 again ziwangapa. We will also investigate the, it's not the allegation, eh, but the comment eti, eh, at some point, kwagio identifier e gas from the mountains here and there were objections. Um, lebe, debesi, debesi tetawienza, egwi upstream petroleum. It's a part of trola we guess, ne, ne, no petrol, ola anle, nas, nas mchabin. So, eh, ngia kabango oguti kuyachumaana, eh, this is, this is a checka leondo oguti ye zaga nganjan. I'm not necessarily responding on point to point, but I'm just highlighting ukuma na wezin do oguti,